I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now point your clickers to the reception area there and let's see if we have a quorum. We have a quorum. Before we get going, Matt Hansen, Chairman of the Board, has a presentation he would like to make along with Sheila.
Good evening. This is Mary Franz, was last night as member of the Finance Committee at town meeting. Can you hear me? How's this? I'd like to say a few words on her behalf. Mary Franz is a highly respected professional who is well-known throughout the Merrimack Valley. She has been involved in many high-visibility areas in Chelmsford, which has made a significant difference to our community. She was a member of the Chelmsford School Committee for many years and served as its chairman for multiple years, as well as vice-chair and clerk. Her ability to foresee the needs of the children and promote their educational excellence was, had always been the utmost in her mind. She served on the school committee during extremely difficult financial times and was a prominent member of the Center School Building Committee, which has tremendously enhanced the elementary educational facilities in Chelmsford. Mary's opinions have been heard throughout the school system as wise and accurate. She has given so much of her life to the students and their families. For years, Mary has been an extremely active member of the League of Women Voters. She has been a prominent force in the continuity of that organization by serving on the State Board from 1997 to 2003, as well as the State League Program and Action Committee from 1997 to 2009, and as education and education finance specialist. Mary has also served as the League of Women Voters representative on the Foundation Budget Review Commission and tasked to work alongside others to find a more equitable formula for Chapter 70 funding to all cities and towns in Massachusetts. She is the person who knows the most about the detailed Chapter 70 funding formula in Chelmsford. Mary has ensured that the correct information about each candidate was known throughout the community through annual debates sponsored by the League of Women Voters. She believes that it is very important that each candidate has their own opinions and that they are known and understood, and that those opinions are heard throughout the town. While Mary has been a Chelmsford Town Representative since 1989, she has also focused on serving on the Finance Committee from 1998 to 2013 and its chairman for five years. During tumultuous financial times, she has positively influenced many important financial management decisions. Mary is known for her accurate knowledge of town finances and has always focused precisely on the appropriate needs for various levels of projects. Mary's passion for her work in the town has been so obvious, she is always thinking of how Chelmsford can function more efficiently without sacrificing the excellence in the quality of life for families of all ages. Mary Franz is an extremely respected member of Chelmsford and has given so much of her life to making it a better place to live. Thank you, Mary. We all hope you will continue your community involvement in many other ways through the town.
On behalf of the town of Chelmsford, Mary, we have this clock to award you. Mary Franz, an appreciation for your many years of dedicated service to the town of Chelmsford on the Finance Committee from 1999 to 2013. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and all I know is I can't change my mind now. I will continue, I hope to continue to be a town meeting rep, but Finance Committee, in terms of its period, certain times of the year, the meeting schedule is very demanding, and it's time for me to leave that demanding role, and I'll still be very involved in town, no question about that, and I thank everyone for their nice applause. Thank you.
Now, before we start, I'd like to have approval of David Hetterson, who's a resident of Boston, also the executive director of the Chelmsford Housing Authority. I need approval for him to speak. All those in favor, raise your tickets. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 17. I have a standing motion to waive the reading of Article 17. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Hi, I'm Bob Morse, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, and I just wanted to speak for a moment shortly before I turn this presentation over to David. This first slide here is on the funding that is going to be used for this project, and the first amount is the amounts that were returned from the last town meeting, from the two categories, the brown and Lynn account and the courtyard buy-down. Next is what exists currently in the Housing Reserve, which is the set-aside account, and also includes what we added this year, this fiscal year into the Housing Reserve, the $105,000 that we put into the Housing Reserve for fiscal year 2014. Then we would propose borrowing over 15 years. Current rate is at or below 2.5 percent for $1.486 million for a total appropriation of 2.181. I wanted to just talk on the length of the term for a little bit, because in David's slides, he shows projecting out to a 20-year, 20-year bond, and the reason for that is he wanted to keep it at or below the 10 percent minimum that is used to put aside into the Affordable Housing Account. The rest of the committee felt that 15 years would be more appropriate, it would shorten it by five years, and I would point out that after only five years, in the year 2020, the projected income for the Community Preservation Fund, the 10 percent set-aside would then match the bond amount, so it's really only for about five years that would exceed that. And I feel strongly that putting, well, we have to put aside at least the 10 percent, and going beyond that by some small amount is, should be not an issue for this wonderful project. I'll turn this over to David.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight about this project. As it was stated, I'm David Hetterson, the Director of the Chelmsford Housing Authority. I'm in my 24th year of working at this agency, and it's really been an honor to serve the town that I grew up in, and a town that I love. Before we get started, okay, who's going to control the clicker? I got the clicker right here, okay. Okay, before we get started, I'm just going to touch upon the Chelmsford Affordable Housing Plan. For me, I've always said to the town, to Paul, to the selectmen, town meeting reps, members in town, "Listen, please give us some direction on where you think it's appropriate to place housing." Because for me, the last thing I want to do is build 10 projects in 10 people's backyards. It's not a pleasant thing to do for you, for me, for anyone. So we really, I looked to the town to come up with a plan that identified the key parcels that could be developed. So in December 2011, this site was listed as an appropriate site for approximately 120 units of rental housing for families, seniors, veterans, disabled. After the Affordable Housing Plan was submitted to the state, I don't want to say shortly thereafter, but eventually, the Housing Advisory Board was formed. And I'd just like to take one moment and pass the mic to John Edward to speak about his role with the Housing Advisory Board in this site.
Hi, excuse me, I am John Edward, and I serve on the Housing Advisory Board, and I've been designated by the Board as a spokesperson for this project tonight. And since this is one of the newer committees in town, I just thought I would read to you from our mission statement. Says this Housing Advisory Board is to conduct pre-application meetings, as requested by potential applicants, to ensure housing proposals are consistent with the housing goals stated in the adopted master plan and Affordable Housing Master Plan documents. This project came before the Housing Advisory Board in January, and after hearing the presentation and deliberating, we voted unanimously, and I think it's fair to say enthusiastically, to write a letter to the Community Preservation Committee in support of this project. It was pretty easy for us to decide to support it, because this is one of the high-priority sites identified in the Affordable Housing Plan. This project meets the needs of the community as identified by both the master plan and the Affordable Housing Plan, and also provides a local preference. This project is a redevelopment project, again emphasized in both the master plan and the Affordable Housing Plan, and this project will produce units that will be added to the subsidized housing inventory, significant units that will give us at least one year of protection from unwanted 40B projects. Beyond that, I think we, I can say fairly that we enthusiastically supported this project because it goes well beyond what was envisioned in the Affordable Housing Plan. They could have gotten away with just producing 20 or 25 percent affordable units, they're going for 100 percent affordable units. And they could have just settled for the Chapter 40B designation of affordable, which in many cases isn't truly affordable, they're going to be producing truly affordable units. So again, we enthusiastically and unanimously support this project.
Okay, now I'm back. I'll try to be as succinct as possible, but sometimes when I go to present affordable housing projects, I do feel like the skunk at the garden party, but I will say this is a plan that I really feel very passionate about. So I would say, we've been very fortunate to have town meetings support us in the past, and as a quick update, we've secured all the funding for our Veterans Housing Project on Mannahan. We have 37 contractors that have picked up the plans, and we'll have a home for eight veterans returning from war in the spring of next year, and I invite all of you to be there because you're all a part of it. Okay, moving on. Now, just to make sure everyone's familiar with this site, this is the old highway market. It's about eight acres, and there are 23 rental units on that site already. So we have 23 rental units and two commercial spaces. When I went to the town clerk's office, I was just asking to see if they had any listing for who the residents were living there, because I found it odd that they don't have mailboxes. And when I went to look to see if there were registered voters, if they're able to fill out census documents, the residents here at this site don't even have a real mailing address. And these are some of the most low-income people that are living in our community in horrible conditions, to the point where the Public Health Department has gone out to take a look. So this is the site again. Just this is an overhead view, it backs up to 495, and there are some wetlands in the back, but one of the things I learned is, having gone through enough of these housing projects, you hear what the concerns are. I don't want to have to go to conservation and say, "I want you to waive the local bylaw. I want to be between the 50-foot and 100-foot." No. So we ended up pulling everything to the town bylaw of 100-foot buffer. Then we looked at the site. Now, I have to say to you, this slide has been updated, and the revised site is going into the zoning board this week on Thursday. There is no swimming pool, because we weren't able to, we're not going to have enough money to do the swimming pool. In place of that, we're going to be adding additional playgrounds and areas for children to play. We've set up this site to really become a community where kids can grow up and feel safe and have a place to live. Now, the front, the front part is going to be townhomes, three-bedroom townhomes, and you can see down below what they're going to look like. In the back, we'll have three garden-style buildings with elevators. So it's going to be a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms. Now, people will say, "Oh, my gosh, three bedrooms, all those kids, all those students." Well, we're looking at 115 units, and because all are affordable, we can give a 70 percent preference to every one of those units to local residents, current local residents. So we have 31 bedrooms going in. 21 of those will be set aside to local residents. We have 62 bedrooms, 42 will be set aside for local residents. We have 25 three-bedrooms, of which 17 will go to local residents. When we look at the number of bedrooms that are on this site total, there are 228 bedrooms. Similarly, the Kensington has 225 bedrooms. We anticipate there to be about 25 to 30 children at this site, of which at least 70 percent are already within the school department. So we're not going to be carting in new kids from outside of town, but we're going to be taking care of our kids and giving them a safe place to call home. Often, I have to say, I get really emotional about this, because, you know, it was nice to see everybody here for the turf fields, all the parents, the kids coming together and showing how important it was to have turf fields, but the people that I'm talking for tonight aren't here. You know, we have about 40 percent of our community that are below, that would meet this need, but they're not going to stand up here and say, "Yes, I'm a low-middle-income earner, and I need a safe place for my kids to call home." So I'm your spokesperson tonight. Talking about lessons learned, you know, when the Kensington was first built on Littleton Road, people would say, "Oh, my gosh, did you see what they approved? That thing is so huge, it's ugly." And I said, "Okay, lesson learned number one, never build anything as big as the Kensington." So I had the architects draw up a detail showing the height of the Kensington, which is 52 feet from where the town measures it, and our proposed garden-style buildings are only 38.8. So we're looking at about a 14-foot reduction from the Kensington, and that's also going to be set back off the street. The front row are going to be townhomes, and I said, "Okay, what are the height of the townhomes across the street?" That was a 40B development, and the height of those are 38 feet. Our proposal is 33.5. And what we're going to be doing is, is where you see the highway market and all that beautiful asphalt, that's going to go bye-bye, and it's going to become green space, it's going to become trees, it's eventually going to become the backyard to the townhomes, so the kids will have a place to play that will be safe, and it's going to be much more visually appealing to the area. I don't want to get into a long list of all the benefits to the town, but I do want to say, you know, we can build rental housing, and we can say, "All of it counts, all of it counts," so it gives us numbers, but to say, "All the units are actually going to be affordable," is awesome. And when I say affordable, I don't mean free, and that's one thing I think people have a misconception of. They hear, "Oh, he's building affordable housing, it's going to be truly affordable, so anyone can just walk in there and pay, maybe nothing, or just a little." Everyone that's going to move into this place has to have income. They have to have income, and they have to have a minimum income. We're not going to allow someone to move into this site, that will be, it'll be a failure for them, and I'll go on and talk about in just a moment. So it's 100 percent affordable, we'll have at least a one-year reprieve from other 40B developments. Just because this project has come forward and there's been people that have said some positive things, I've had one developer come forward that wants to redevelop, or no, wants to basically take some farmland and turn it into housing, and he looked panicked, and he said, "If your project gets approved, David, that means I probably can't build on that farmland." And there's that little part of me inside that I do love open space, too, and I was thinking, "Oh, goodie." So the other part is, is this development's going to be ones, twos, and threes, so we can expect to see some singles, some elderly people, some vets, we could have disabled, it could be families, it's going to be a community. And just today, I had a 52-year-old woman that came in, she lost her house to foreclosure and has been really struggling to have a safe place to live, and I had to tell a 52-year-old woman, "Listen, if you're not 60, you can't apply for senior housing, and we have nothing for you for a one-bedroom. I'm sorry." I mean, how can you, in good conscience for me, say that to a Chelmsford resident that's lived here her whole life? Now, just to go on to talk about some of the rents, as I said, they're not free. Now, this is not on this slide, but if I was going to say to you, now Coach Carriage House, do people know where Coach Carriage House is in the center of town? It was recently purchased by a new developer, and I think they think it's an Avalon property or an Artstone property, they just raised all the rents. So Coach Carriage House right now is $1,150 for a one-bedroom, $1,450 for a two-bedroom. We have had residents from Chelmsford that were modest-income earners living there because it was affordable to them, and just recently, they came into our office panicked, because they don't know where they're going to get the extra 200 bucks from. The rents that we're proposing for this development are not going to be changed on a whim like, "Oh, I think we can get more money for them." No, these are specifically tied to the area median incomes, so people, when they move in, are not going to have that fear of the rents going up by 100, 200, 300 dollars. So you forget Coach Carriage House, you say maybe Brick Hill and Road, the Meadows, well, that was a 40B, that must be affordable over there. Well, right now, the regular market rents over at the Meadows on Brick Hill and Road, $1,200 for a one-bedroom, $1,500 to $2,000 for a two-bedroom. Seriously. The Kensington, the nice, big, tall building that I was talking about before, $1,500 for a one-bedroom, $1,700 for a two-bedroom. Princeton Commons on the Rotary, $1,500 for a one-bedroom, $1,900 for a two-bedroom. And you say, "Well, didn't all of them have, didn't all those developments have some affordable units in it?" Yes, but they were affordable by definition only, they were not affordable to the people that moved into the affordable units. So our agency actually had to put a Section 8 voucher into the affordable units to make them actually affordable, and the wait to get into those affordable units is at least three to five years, and the list is actually closed. So not much hope for those people. And when I talk about these rents, so we're looking at the one-bedrooms range between $435 to $961. That's all utilities included, all utilities included. Two-bedrooms are going to range from $519 to $1,234, with the majority being right around the $1,000 mark. On the three-bedrooms, we're looking at $600 to $1,500. Now, if anyone can tell where they can find a three-bedroom rental in Chelmsford for a family that has a son and a daughter, who may not even be school-aged children, they may be, you know, really young, even not going to school. You can't find them. So when you're looking at this 30 percent, 60 percent, and you see something called HAP, that's 30 percent median income, 50 percent median income, 60 percent median income, and I'm not going to do by a show of hands, but the 60 percent median income units, if you're a single person, that means you're making less than $40,000 a year. I can tell you, I know quite a few people here in Chelmsford that make less than $40,000 a year. Let's see, $40,000 a year, that means if you're working a 40-hour-a-week job, you're making less than $26.67 an hour. That's not a bad hourly rate, but when you take out your insurance, the taxes, and everything else you got to pay, it gets really tough. The 50 percent median income, yeah, I know people in this room here that are earning less than $32,550, and that would be an hourly rate of about $15.63. We're not talking about minimum-wage workers, we're talking about people that are earning not such a bad hourly rate. When you get down to the 30 percent of area median income, we're looking at a single person at $19,050. This could be someone on SSI, someone that's disabled, it could be someone on Veterans' Benefits. And if someone working, they could be working 40 hours a week at $9 an hour at many places. They could be a bank teller, a home health aide that comes and takes care of my mother or my grandmother, you know, those low-skilled, some of those low-skilled positions that work their heart and soul out to bring the bread home for their family and take care of people in this town. I went through the job postings, because I've been hearing a lot, you know, "You're bringing those people into town." Not from a lot of people, but some, and I kept thinking, "We're bringing those people into town? Well, I know a lot of those people, and they already live here." And I was going through the list, and there was job openings for people that would qualify for these units, working at a local vet, working as a case manager for elder services, working at a local church, full-time, a call center, the assistant manager at Starbucks, a head custodian. These are all people that are part of the fabric of our community. These are not people that are, we're just going to be bussing in. I'm going to go through the schedule. Most of the time we do these projects, things don't happen overnight. However, because this is 100 percent affordable, the state is really excited about this, and they're saying to us that we should be able to receive our funding by beginning of 2014, and this project could be completed by 2016, early 2017. And that's typically the timeframe, it's three to five years, sometimes closer to the five-year mark. We're submitting to the zoning board this week, and the first hearing is going to be the first week of June. So tonight, if people have questions about what are their units going to look like, where are the playgrounds going to be, what, how the building's going to look, how far are they going to be away from the street, I encourage everyone to participate, whether in support or against, or just to voice your concerns or your support. The zoning board will probably open, I think, on June 6th. Now, to give some, an idea of what we're looking at, we're looking at $2.18 million, of which there's about $700,000 already set aside in the community housing account. We're looking at taking $2.18 million and basically turning that into almost, not 31, we got to take out the permanent debt. So about $28 million. So we'll take 2.1, and I'll bring in about $28 million from other sources, from the state and federal funding sources. And if we don't use this money, Boston, Cambridge, Framingham will. And for me, there are people that we care about here in this town that we got to take care of. Next is, I'm not going to bore you with this, but, you know, we do have affordable housing goals. We want to serve a full range of low and moderate-income families, promoting diversity and stability of individuals and families in Chelmsford, ensure the new affordable housing is harmonious with the existing community, try to meet the 10 percent goal, and leverage other public and private resources, which is something I've always done. We could never build a project with just $2.18 million. If that was the case, it'd probably be an eight-to-10 unit project, which would really get us nowhere. Last but not least, I want to keep things in perspective, because people hear $2.18 million, "Oh, my gosh." When I went to CPC, I said to them, "You know, I get it, I truly get it. When the town passed CPC, the priority was open space, the priority was historic preservation." So far, we've only spent 10 percent of the funds we brought in on affordable housing, which Bob can confirm, we're only at 10 percent, we haven't gone over the 10 percent on affordable housing. So I said to them, to CPC, that I really want to stay within the 10 percent set-aside, so no one can say we're taking away from open space or historic preservation. And we had the conversation, was it 15 years or was it 20 years? And I think it came down to the difference of maybe $30,000 by doing 15 years, that we'd spend over the 10 percent over the whole period. So the Choice Center, the great building out back here, we received $400,000 for 37 units. Our Mannahan Street Veterans Housing, for eight units, we received $400,000. The Lynn Marcella Residence is $75,000 for five units. On average, we've received about $19,500 per affordable unit built, and this request is for about $18,965. I'm going to, this, I'm going to skip, because this was my own calculation showing you would not go over the 10 percent and actually be under it relatively soon. But the one thing I want to say to you is, if someone will say, "Well, David, can you guarantee you're going to get that $27 million? What happens if we award this money to you tonight, and you get it, and you don't get that other money?" Well, the guarantee is, we will not be releasing any of the town's community preservation until all other funding is in place, okay? So $1 will not be spent until all other funding has been received. Two, we're going to put an affordable housing restriction on it. So someone said to me, "Well, you know, someone can, you could just sell that, you're not going to be here forever, David, maybe in 20 years, someone will flip it and make a lot of money." Well, the town's going to have an affordable housing restriction on this, and they're going to be party to any transfer. So let's say, I don't want to say I get hit by a bus, let's say in 30 years I retire to Italy, I'd like that, and the ownership changes, the units are going to be affordable in perpetuity, the units are going to be affordable forever, and if there's a transfer of ownership, the town has a place at the table to say either yes or no, we agree with the transfer. to say either yes or no, we agree with the transfer. The town could say, "Okay, in 30 years, we will sign these documents, but we want the $2.18 million back." Or, "You know something, you're doing such a great job, you can keep that money in the project. And if something happens down the road, that's our insurance." It's going to give the town a lot of ability to restrict and control the site for the long term. And there was one more thing I wanted to say, and now it just escapes me, I'm usually so verbose. I just want to say thank you. However it goes tonight, I just really mean it. I love my job, I have the best job in the world. It's incredibly frustrating to not have enough help to help everybody. But each day, we do help someone, it makes a difference. I can go to sleep at night and know that I just, you know, you can say you try to do good, but every day, it's the best job in the world, being there to help people. So thank you.
Okay, we are now entering the question and answer period. You know, there's a misconception, you can't ask as many questions as you want. You most certainly can, you ask them two at a time. When you get your answers, go to the end of the line. Let's give everybody a chance to ask questions.
Dennis Reddy, Precinct 8. Dave, when this project's done and built, who will actually own the property?
Okay, and this is a question that has also come up, so thank you for asking it. Because the project is receiving tax credits, okay? The Housing Authority and our nonprofit cannot own the tax credits. It has to be a third-party entity. It's going to be controlled, it's going to actually be owned by Chelmsford Woods LLC, for which I'm going to be, I'm a partner in that, as well as an investor. Because, let's say, the federal government's going to give us $30 million of tax credits. What happens is, just to keep this relatively simple, $30 million of tax credits flow from the IRS. I take that $30 million, and I have to find someone who has $30 million of tax liability. I enter into a partnership with them, they become a partner to this, and they use those tax credits over a 10-year period. And they're the ones that receives the tax benefit on that investment from the IRS. But we are going to be the one controlling the site and managing the site. Just like the Choice Center back here, by the way. The Choice Center's the same way.
Now, who would be the people that ran the Woods LLC?
Me.
Now, are you appointed by somebody, or?
I'm the executive director, but it's also going to be Choice. So just to give people a little bit of background about who we are, what we are, where the Chelmsford Housing Authority formed in 1970. As I said, I've been here for 24 years. It got to a certain place in time, about 10 years ago, where there was no money available for state or federal public housing. There was only money available to the developers, like Archstone, Avalon, Kensington-type developers, private developers. So I said, "Instead of letting those people take control of the housing that's built in Chelmsford, I'm going to form a nonprofit. It's going to be called Choice. Choice Chelmsford Housing Opportunities for Intergenerational and Community Endeavors." And the way it's set up, it's an exact mirror of the Chelmsford Housing Authority. If you ran for Chelmsford Housing Authority Commissioner, you would automatically be seated at the nonprofit of Choice.
Okay, one of my concerns is that with things going on right now politically with the governor and all the housing authorities, I see the distinct possibility of the governor disbanding all the housing authorities and forming regional groups. What would happen in that case?
Well, I would say, the nice thing is, they've already asked me if I wanted to be one of the regional directors, but I've already told them I'm not interested. Secondly, the legislation that we've proposed, I am also sit at MassNARO, it's the Massachusetts National Association for Housing Redevelopment Officials, and there's actually competing legislation. We've actually received endorsement from over 86 members of our legislative body. And basically, everyone else has said at the state level, "The governor's bill is dead in arrival." Because let me tell you right now, do we want someone from some other community managing the housing in this town? When Millie is sick in her apartment, or she needs services set up, we know who Millie is, we get to Millie really quick, and we know what the pulses of our town. So I don't believe it's going to be happening. I'm pretty confident it's not going to be happening. And the nice part is, if it does, Choice will still be around.
Okay, one last question.
We have a person behind you, Dennis.
One last question. 15, 20 years ago, the Housing Authority was coming to this board, this town meeting, and saying they wanted to have affordable housing spread throughout the community so you can't tell where it is, and you don't have a stigma of, "Oh, you live in the affordable housing, right," or the project. What's changed?
This is not a project, this is the nice part, this is not public housing. This is considered private housing. This is going to look like even better than the Kensington. It's going to look just like, if you drive right back there and look at the Choice Center, and if you look at that building, you said, "I live over there, and it's 100% affordable", and you walk into that place, it looks like a high-end development. The nice part is, is these developments are not public housing projects. These are considered private projects. And because we're not taking the profit out, like these other large corporations will do, like Princeton Properties, we're investing it back into the developments. It's not a project. It's a moderate-income development, where you could say, "The homes in the Westlands, people, you know, the homes are more inexpensive there." But is that a bad, is that a bad neighborhood? No, that's where my grandma lived, that's where I kind of grew up, so.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4.
Hi, Brian.
Mr. Harrison, the property at the top of page six says that it will serve families, seniors, disabled, and veterans. But the picture, to me, looks like there's a lot of living space upstairs, especially to the one to the left there. It looks like a garage with no living space, where someone that has a wheelchair could actually sleep, very much like some of the other 40Bs have gone in. Can you tell us how many units would truly be accessible? In other words, ground floor accessible for living space?
Okay, first of all, we can't put them all on ground floors. So there's going to be the townhomes in the front, which I think there's 11 townhomes. And if you look at the end units, that's the larger one, that actually has bedrooms on the first floor. So that could be accessible. And this is where I will say, 5% of the units will be accessible.
How many units?
5%.
Which is how many?
Six, but these are all going to be adaptable, okay? So Brian, just to tell you, Mr. Latina, just to tell you the status, is when we talk about units that are fully handicap accessible, with no cabinets in the kitchen, no cabinets in the bathroom, roll-in showers, when we develop our units, we make them universal design, easily modified. Because what ends up happening is, is a lot of times, people don't necessarily need a fully handicap accessible unit. So our 5% meets that need, and they're usually the hardest units to fill at the end of the day. What we have are units that can be modified easily, and we built that into the original design, so all the doorways are 36-inch wide. The showers are not going to be, there'll be bathtubs, but there'll also be shower stalls that have a very, very low threshold, that people can transfer easy. So when we do things, it may not be the cheapest, but we take those things into consideration.
And this is an ADA, affordable housing unit that you're describing, not something, a Chelmsford accessible property?
No, this is, I mean, this is, we have to be fully accessible per state requirements. I mean, we have to.
Second question, and they couldn't answer this when we were looking at the houses, the affordable housing on Turnpike Road, no one seemed to know the answer. Is there any requirement that you be an American citizen or have documentation that says that you belong in the country?
Yes, this is, I don't want to say yes, this is the nice thing. But for me, quite frankly, it's frustrating because the state public housing, this white building behind you, the state has told us it does not matter anyone's status. They can arrive here today and be housed, okay, three to five years. The gray building and the Choice Center, because they're all federally funded, have a requirement that you have to be documented legally here.
And you would check the documentation?
Oh, I have to, oh, no, I have to. I actually have to use the SAVE program and enter any kind of visa that they have online and verify their status.
Thank you.
So, okay.
Before we go on, there is an automobile out there with its lights on, and I have here, the plate number is FB6. I assume it's Massachusetts. Facebook 6, FB6. Next.
Good evening, Bill Griffin, Precinct 9. David, thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of questions, please, if I could. One about staffing and the other about the site. After the site is developed, will it be the Chelmsford Housing Authority staff, or would it be the group that you partner in that does all the maintenance on the site?
It's, they're all of our employees. So Choice does not have any employees, everything is through the Chelmsford Housing Authority. We have 22 staff right now. We'll probably be adding at least another four to six staff members for that site. And as you can see from the back, if you drive around this back development here, it's all maintained as if I would be living there, my mother would be living there. And we take it seriously. And the nice part is, is we're starting off the $1 million in reserves, and we'll be funding those reserves on a regular basis, which doesn't happen on our state public housing.
Thank you for understanding where the rest of that question was going to go. As far as the site plan goes, can you pull up the overhead view right after the satellite view for a second? There you go. On the backside of where the gardens style are, this may be a question for either you or for the chief, but has, you know, given the recent events back in the fall, in the early spring, there's not a lot of access to the back of that building. Have you considered how to get people to egress from there in the event of a fire?
Well, let me say this to you, this is not the final site plan. The new site plan actually has, let me first say this, this is not the final site plan. I'm very aware and conscious about this. The Choice Center out back does not have access completely all around the building because we went to a higher level of fire protection. So that means all the closets, I mean, it's required now. But all the units are fully sprinkled, and this would be fully sprinkled, whether it's a closet, utility closet, a bedroom. We're going to be at the highest level of protection, unlike Woodcrest, where that happened. So we don't require full access all the way around, but we're going to have much better turnarounds. And we're going to be meeting shortly, well, in between May 6th and June 6th, we'll be meeting with fire prevention and going through turning radiuses and how the best access to the site.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, next.
Nancy Donahue, Precinct 9. In your presentation, you said that there would be 35 children among all when you completed 100 units. How did you come up with that small figure?
Okay, the town actually paid for a study. The town paid for a study because there were a number of people in this community that said, you know, "I don't believe that, I believe there's a terrible impact on 40Bs with children." So if I was going to tell you, this study that was commissioned and paid for by the town, and it's available at the Community Development Office, if we go to look at 36, if you know the little, the drive-in theater, 360 Courtyard, we have 103 two-bedroom, 67 three-bedrooms. So significantly larger than this development. And there's a total school enrollment of 37, okay? And that's many more three-bedrooms, that's double the three-bedrooms, it's almost double the two-bedrooms. We look at the Kensington, which has 144 rental units, but pretty much the same number of bedrooms, there's only 25 children enrolled. When you look at a larger development like Robin Hill Meadows, some people will say, "I'd rather see like these homes built, single-family homes, and make a couple affordable." So when they built Robin Hill Meadows, that four, their four-bedroom homes, 16 single-family homes, 20 kids in the school. So in these two-bedroom units, you typically see, you know, one adult and one child. And that child may not be school-aged, or could be past school-age. On the three-bedrooms, if you think about Chelmsford today, and you think about how many people you know that have children, how many are having four children? Most of the time, I see, whether in my office or just being in the community, I do see, you know, a boy and a girl.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4.
Yes.
Point of order, I have five children.
How many school-aged, I'm sorry?
They're all finished, 13 years in the high school system.
Wow, awesome.
Mr. Latina, that would be a point, that would be a point of information.
I'm sorry.
Turnpike Woods, how many children there?
Turnpike.
Oh, I'm sorry, they changed the name to Orchard Woods.
Okay, I don't have the number for Orchard Woods. I have the number for Woodland Square, Courtyard, Robin Hill Meadows, and Kensington.
Okay, second question. The financing, if you could flip to that chart, shows 2015 at one end and 2028 at the other?
Yep. This one?
One chart back, I think. A little bit easier to read, nope, keep going. There's a brown chart, maybe the first screen?
Don't get dizzy. That one?
One more.
That one?
That one, at the bottom here, it's showing that we're encumbering CPA funds, which town meeting could turn off at any point in time. We're encumbering that for the next 15 years, 10% affordable housing, so we won't have any money left for affordable?
So I can answer that question? Okay, so, yes, but the nice part is, Brian, Mr. Latina, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
In the past, when we were doing projects that were really smaller-scale niche, like niche projects, elderly housing is not a priority to the state. Veterans housing was a priority to the state. So, and we were not, as a nonprofit, we weren't really established. Now, as a nonprofit, we are able to secure a lot of foundation money. So if we do encumber this money for the next 15 years, the whole 10% set aside, and another project comes up, and the town says, "David, we want you to build housing." Sure, tell me where you want to build it. And it comes up, and we need to find some seed money. We maintain, basically, a seed money account where we can handle, we can handle feasibility studies, and we won't be coming back to you for money on...
So in other words, there won't be any more CPA funds, but you have other sources, and you're going to turn this into $28 million or something like that?
Yep, so pretty much, Brian, Mr. Latina, one of the goals here is, is for me, I almost wanted to get this planned production going. Because hitting, I mean, really hitting the need of over 1,000 people on our waiting list from Chelmsford with 115 units is going to make a huge difference in the lives of those families. But it's also going to say to the other 40B developers, you know, "You have a one-year moratorium, you can't do any more." If the other project they're talking about on Brick Hill Road of another 120 units, rental, not affordable, come through, that's going to give us three years. So we'll be able to stop.
Thank you, next.
Joe Reddy, Precinct 1. Now, is this parcel that we're acquiring, this is one contiguous, or is it seven parcels?
No, it's not all seven, it's not all seven. Honestly, the number of parcels that it's, there's, we're not buying all the parcels. There are some parcels that are not for sale, and we're not part of the original foreclosure.
Okay, and how much, did we already acquire the parcels, and how much did we acquire them for, or how much will we be acquiring them for?
Yeah, the town will not be acquiring it, okay?
Or whoever the entity is.
Okay, Chelmsford Woods LLC would acquire it at about 1.9, but we're actually still negotiating down to probably like 1.7.
So you haven't finished negotiating it?
No.
And you had mentioned that you have affordable housing in Kensington, that you had a three-to-five-year list, you said that you closed it off. Why would we ever close off a list to people that need housing?
Okay, so at this point, if we left the list open for the last three years, and you walked into my office and said, "I want to apply," and I looked at you and I said, "There's a 12-year wait," realistically, if I leave those people on the waiting list, they're not going to be around in five years or seven years. They're going to find some other avenue or other place to live. So the rule of law with the state is, you should maintain a waiting list so you have adequate number on your list to serve the next year, at the most, three. So when we hit the number, it was like a five-year waiting list, we shut it down because why have someone fill out a 20-page, not 20, it's like a 13-page application, when there's really no hope for them?
So you basically go through and purge the people that are on the list to make sure they're still there, or?
Annually, we do that.
Okay, we have a person behind you.
Hi, Ms. Derry.
Hi, Debbie Derry, Precinct 6. I have a question, one of my questions is, are you going to do a lottery like you did a technology drive for these units? And how many units will be going out of town? Because I even helped somebody fill out an application for a disabled unit for a technology drive, that's why I was weird.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. So 70% is set aside as affordable. So what will happen is, this is two phases, we have... We have about fifty-six units in the first phase, around fifty-six units in the first phase, sixty, fifty-six, sixty. We'll see after it comes out of the ZBA. We'll hold a lottery. And, what will happen is, you, Ms. Derry, will get a lottery ticket for local, local, and you'll also get a lottery ticket for the open pool. What that means is seventy percent of the units, so if there's fifty, thirty-five are going to be going to people that are holding Chelmsford resident tickets. Those thirty-five are Chelmsford people. The remaining fifteen will be drawn from an open pool. So, when I look at that open pool, Ms. Derry has a ticket for the open pool. All Chelmsford people will also have an open pool ticket. We've done lotteries in Westford, Lancaster, Concord, where I'd say the majority end up being local residents. So, it could be, at the worst-case scenario, it could be fifteen people that are not Chelmsford residents for the first phase.
My other question is, I, have you, maybe I'm not aware of it, how, how many seniors were you planning on putting in this facility? And, do you think where you're talking at least thirty-five children at least would interact with the elderly and maybe I would think that it would be more appropriate for them to be in a senior center such as this or?
But, the scary part is, scary part is, is I don't want to take a show of hands, but how many people here are sixty years old, you know?
Well, don't ask us that.
I know, but the thing is, the definition of senior, the definition of senior is sixty. So, I have people that are sixty years old that don't want to be living, you know, in a senior housing development. They still see themselves as not even knowing what this place is, the senior center, because they still are working, you know, they're still working, they're active, and they want to be part of a community. They don't want to live in an elderly-only development. So, there's thirty units total that are one-bedrooms. But, we could see all go to seniors, sixty and over.
I thought it was, I didn't realize it was sixty and over.
Yeah, it's sixty. And, it's funny because, I mean, you know, people will say, "I'm not ready to go there." You know, people will joke and say, "When I'm ninety, I'll give you a call." So, you know, the face of our community is changing and the baby boomers are getting older and the sixty-year-olds don't necessarily want to be moving into here because we do have supportive services. They'll say, "I want to be near kids, I want to, I love kids, I want to live in a building near my daughter."
I just didn't know if you ran into any problems in the other facilities that we, you know, we had, but I don't think there's that many facilities with that many three-bedroom units, which, and I will congratulate you. This is something I've been wanting to see in this town for a long time.
Debbie, do you have any more questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, well, no, I'm going to sit down, thank you.
But, Ms. Derry, I will say, you were the biggest supporter for me to do three-bedrooms because you had, you had, I remember very well.
Joe Ready, Precinct one. You had mentioned about schoolchildren in specific developments. Were those just for the affordable housing units in those units? And, do you have numbers for how many schoolchildren we have in affordable units versus the remaining units within that?
Okay, so, are you?
You know, let's take this, right, you take a development, it's got ten percent affordable housing. How many children are within that ten percent, that actual housing that's affordable?
Okay, I don't do a test, I'm just being honest with you.
You just do it by, by complex, right?
I don't, I don't, I don't break it down by, we get the numbers from the schools, okay? And, so, the schools don't come back and say to me, "These kids are from parents that only make thirty thousand." So, these numbers come directly from, from the schools.
Okay. Now, you had mentioned that as part of this nonprofit, you're going to receive tax credits equalling close to thirty million dollars. You're going to be the person that has sole discretion on how those are allotted? Who would have discretion over?
No, no, it's not that easy. It's really not that easy. What ends up happening is, we actually have to try to sell them. And, you end up selling tax credits, usually about eighty cents to eighty-five cents on the dollar. And, that's why an investor will come in and want to buy them from you.
Have you ever sold tax credits before?
We originally had tax credits on the Choice Center back here. But, the amazing part is, is people might think I'm Superman sometimes, but I have a great team. And, we have Klein Hornig, one of the best syndicators, law firms in Boston, number one. And, we have an amazing team of professionals that have been able to walk us through a number of these projects. Yes, we had tax credits and this is not something I have any doubt that we can't accomplish and do well.
Okay, who is typically the purchaser of those credits?
Well, it depends on the project. It could be, for example, if you go online and look up Google, Google ended up buying a huge number of tax credits. I want to say not MMA, Mass Municipal bought them, I mean, there's a number of investment companies that will buy them because they have portfolios or people that.
So, that money is then used in these projects again?
Yes. So, we get an allocation, they'll say, "This project has allocated thirty million dollars of tax credits." So, then, we have to actually go through a syndicator. I don't, I don't knock on doors, I don't send out letters. We work with a syndicator who will actually go out into the market and get the best and highest price. Because if I can get, you know, eighty-five cents on a dollar versus eighty-two cents on a dollar, that's a lot of money.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next.
Judge Merrill, Precinct two. Just one question, will this generate any tax revenue for the town?
Yes.
How much?
We've actually submitted a payment in lieu of taxes to the town manager because I do hear the people in town loud and clear, "We should not be building a development of this scale or this size without paying taxes." So, we are paying the building permit fees and we're paying an ongoing fee to the town. I want to say it was maybe fifty thousand with an escalator of three percent every year.
Not taxed on the value then?
No, no.
That's unfortunate. Thank you.
Next.
Claire Gertner, Precinct seven. My question is in regard to the decision to borrow over fifteen years, David. I thought I heard you say, and correct me if I misunderstood, that you don't want to go over your ten percent allocation. But, if there's an allocation each year under the law for ten percent to affordable housing and the other two categories, there's seventy percent in a general reserve. And, I realize there's some debt already for CPC, but we intentionally on Town Hall, for example, both of them chose as short a period as possible. Could this period be shortened?
It could, but I wouldn't because it's a capital program. I mean, the building, the life of this building is going to be at least forty, I'd say forty years. So, that's why I was comfortable with going up to the twenty-year point. And, I really don't want to place a burden on the CPC because there are still a number of smaller projects that are non-housing related that are relying on that seventy percent. Because so much has been set aside for the Town Halls, for the open space purchases, that I would hate to see a good project come forward, like Lupian Farm or something else that we need to bond for a small amount.
And not be able to.
And not be able to do it. And, I think, I always look at this like, if I can go to Town Meeting and present a case where I'm not going over the ten percent, that's one less reason for people to say no.
Thank you.
Next.
Karen Utech, Precinct five. So, I may be confused, so I'm just going to walk through it. So, we're going to, if we give you a certain amount of money, two-point-whatever-million you ask for, you're going to sell the tax credits and that thirty million roughly that you're saying is going to end up back in Choice?
No. It goes right back into the project, so let me.
Into the project. So, it's controlled by the?
Us.
Woods LLC?
Yes.
Will Town Meeting have any control over how that money's spent?
No, but when we go to the zoning board, just to make sure, okay, so the question you're asking is, oh my gosh, I just heard David say, he's getting thirty million dollars, he's going to be, he's going to be like selling these things, getting some money, we're giving him two million, he's rolling in it. What ends up happening is, is before we even get a set aside of tax credits, that thirty million dollars, we actually have to submit a one-stop application, which is a significant document. We've already had two price estimates for the project. We already have, it's a very solid cost estimate that we have to submit to the state. This is a highly competitive process. We are not only monitored by the state, we're monitored by the IRS for every dollar that we spend.
But, how does this govern the thirty million?
That.
That document you're talking about, how does that?
How does what?
How does it govern the thirty million? You said that we shouldn't be concerned because you have a document. I don't understand how it, it helps us not be concerned.
Okay. Well, what I'll say to you is, is we have to cost-certify everything that we've spent. And, all the books are open and expenditures cannot take place without a third party approving them, even more than a third party. So, I can say this to you, we're probably going to have eight different banks or institutions putting money into this project, including CPC. When I get a bill, I'm going to have a bill for, it could be eight hundred thousand dollars, that bill goes out to all the people that are giving money. And, we're saying, with this bill for eight hundred thousand dollars, so much is coming from CPC, so much is coming from the low-income housing tax credit proceeds, so much is coming from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, everyone that has contributed to this project knows how every dollar is being drawn down. And, I cannot get money released without the sign-off from all parties involved. So, it's cumbersome, but there's checks and balances.
And then, I had one more question, which was, earlier you said seventy percent of the project would be affordable? I think it was, you misspoke, I just wanted to make sure. So, it's a hundred percent?
Hundred percent, but seventy percent for Chelmsford.
I, yeah, I think it, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Next. Thank you.
Mark Dolat, Precinct seven. My question is, you mentioned that there was revenue coming into the town in the form of taxes. What is the ongoing expense and is there a net benefit or expense to the, to the town?
Is there a net expense to the town?
Yeah, so there's costs associated with, you know, waste removal, snowplow, things like that, the fire, impact of the fire to the schools. So, what's the net expense?
I don't, I don't have the net expense. I wouldn't know that off the top of my head. I don't know who the residents are. If we have thirty elderly people and they call the ambulance every day, that's one scenario. If, you know, so, I think, Mark, I don't have that answer for you, but I can say, I know when I lived on Talbot Lane, I was paying thirteen thousand dollars a year in taxes with no kids in the school and I had trash pickup. So, I think it's different in every housing development, it depends on who moves in.
So, we don't truly know the costs of the town or the benefit?
Okay, but I'm going to let John speak to that.
I certainly cannot speak to this particular project, but I can tell you that studies that look at the fiscal impact of housing show that high, high-density housing like this typically have a positive fiscal impact for towns.
A hundred percent affordable?
Well, regardless of the affordability issue, it's the issue of density.
Well, no, because, yeah, but the, that impacts your revenue that you, that's coming in.
Well, most people have motor vehicles. So, when we did the study, and there's a study available, Mark, at the Community Development Office that looks at the costs of multifamily housing. And, when you look at the net effect of, you're collecting money for X-size tax for cars and there's another, a number of other trickle-down ways funds come in. Thank you.
Next.
Joe Ready, Precinct one, last question. You said that you're not going to be acquiring all of the acres. What's the exact acreage?
Eight-point, I want to say it's eight-point-six-four.
So, what's declared in here?
What's on there is that one. There's a small parcel right next door that wasn't available.
Next.
Sue Dandara, Precinct nine. David, one of the arguments for the proposal has been that it helps the town gain leverage against private predatory developers looking for 40B. Can you reiterate what that means and what the town's actual leverage is if developers come in?
Okay, so, the first one was, I use that one example, there's a project in East Chelmsford right now, an old piece of farmland that a developer purchased with the hope of putting a number of units on it. And, at this point, he's looking at other options. Because once, I mean, I'm saying once, hopefully, I'm hoping and praying that this project would go through, we would have at least one year where we could say no to a 40B developer. So, not only are we saying no to permitting that project if it's not a good project, but it's also causing land that may come up for sale, that's farmland, people are going to know that they can't build on it, at least for another year. If the project comes through on Brick Hill Road for a hundred and twenty units, we're now three years out. So, it becomes more and more of a challenge. And, when I looked at some of the other parcels, I mean, we have the parcel on the corner of Hunt Road and Littleton Road, the Emanuel Farms, that whole parcel there, there is plans to develop that whole site, which is former farmland. The McKennedy Farm, Hunt Road.
So, you're saying that if this passes, it gives a year?
A year.
To say no to all 40B development?
Yep.
Okay. And, last question, to meet the ten percent affordable state regulation goal, whatever it's called, where are we at today? Is it about?
Seven. We need three hundred eighty-four more units.
Okay. And, this would be a hundred and fifteen?
Yep. And then, we have probably a hundred and twenty coming forward on Brick Hill Road.
Okay.
And, there's still conversations with the project on Mill Road. Again, zoned industrial, not from me, not with Brick Hill Road either. But, we're going to see probably some rental projects coming forward, market rate.
And, when the town meets the ten percent?
Game over.
It's over.
Unless you love something and you say, "David, we really want to see XYZ built."
Thank you. Next.
Maria Carafellis, Precinct two. Hi, Mr. Haddison.
Hello.
I have a quick question. When you say that you are going to pay a certain dollar amount to the town one year and then it goes up periodically, can you give me the percentage of, say, the hundred and fifteen units of what your total income is going to be? What percentage of, do you, projected, what percentage of that will be what you're going to give to the town on a yearly basis?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. We submitted an agreement to the town for the assess, help me out, Paul, is the assessing board would review it? Board of Assessors would be reviewing it and the Selectmen would be reviewing it?
Okay. In that dollar amount, I know you mentioned one-dollar amount. If you had thirty students in the school, say, that's the amount that we've been kind of playing with a little bit, how much of, do you think that that money you'd be giving would be able to cover the children in the, in the schools?
Okay, as I said, seventy percent would already be in the school system, so we're not adding new kids.
Okay.
So, that's the first piece. The second piece is, is when you look at just some of the data in Chelmsford, and I had mentioned to you, mentioned this to you before, the projections for our kids, our school-aged children from two thousand and eight to twenty twenty, between age five and fourteen, is going down between ten percent to seventeen percent. So, it's interesting because we may be seeing thirty students come into this, this, you know, development of which seventy percent are already in the school system. But, I, I don't have numbers on the delta. I don't, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Andy Sillings, Precinct seven. I, I lost track of all the different entities that are, that own or participate in here. And, so, I can explain to others, can you answer these simple questions? The, the Woods LLC will own these once they're built. Is that right or wrong?
It's going to be an entity controlled by the Chelmsford Housing Authority and the person that buys the tax credits.
That's the second question. The Chelmsford Housing Authority, I have heard different things. Does it report to Chelmsford or to the federal government?
The Chelmsford Housing Authority is, we are a state, local, and federal agency. So, we, we, I have a board of commissioners, four of which are locally elected, and one that's appointed by the governor. Our jurisdiction is anywhere in the state of Massachusetts. So, we develop, we manage federal housing programs throughout, you know, Westford, Chelmsford, Harvard, Mass, we're working on. And, just like I'm doing tonight, I go to their CPCs and they support their projects Harvard, Mass, we're working on. And just like I'm doing tonight, I go to their CPCs and they support their projects in their towns.
The "we" is, is who?
Choice and CHA. Sometimes just choice, sometimes just CHA, sometimes both.
Thank you, thank you.
Mark Dole, Precinct Seven. Just out of curiosity, what's the largest development you're proposing in the surrounding towns? Like you mentioned Westford and Harvard.
Well, we've done targeted housing. So the one I'm doing in Westford is veterans' housing. So we wouldn't do a hundred fifty unit development for Westford, for the veterans. It was targeted specifically for returning vets, and that's only five units. Harvey, we're doing redevelopment of an existing site that was in foreclosure. So it was a foreclosure. We came in to rescue it, 'cause the families were being thrown out, and that's only nine units. But we've worked on Benfield Farms and a number of other projects, but.
Where are those?
Benfield's and Carlisle.
Okay, and how?
My priorities here, Mark.
How big was that one?
Oh, it's in, it's in development. Um, maybe forty.
So why the order of magnitude in Chelmsford? There seems ten, sometimes two, I guess, and three, but certainly ten times the size of other towns. Why, why are you proposing such a, such a large?
Well, I think that's a great question, Mark, because quite frankly, I think, as I said before to Community Preservation, I said, we have two, we have a couple of choices. There's a ten percent set aside, there's an affordable housing plan, and there's goals for this community that have been endorsed by the Selectmen, Planning Board, and other entities. I could do ten projects of fifteen units scattered throughout this community and put housing that has not been deemed appropriate in someone's backyard. And I know, I mean, you could be standing up here with something in your backyard. And I wanted to take the direction from the Affordable Housing Plan and take that document seriously and say, the town has said this is an appropriate site for a hundred and twenty units. Oak Hill is also an appropriate site. So instead of saying, I'm gonna go pick ten or fifteen locations and build outside of this plan, was not the goal.
So are the other towns endorsing similar plans?
Next.
Joey Ann Anderson, Precinct Six. Quick question. Are you gonna take anything else into consideration or is it strictly like your gross annual income such as a student who graduates from college comes out of school with a hundred thousand dollars in loans and is living in their, in their parents' garage because they have a thousand dollar a month payment back? Would that be considered towards affordable?
The rule of thumb is, is we don't want someone moving into the development where they'll be paying more than forty percent of their income towards their rent.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Okay. So in order for someone to move into their housing, so if this person had a thousand dollar a month bill for their student loans, but only made fourteen hundred dollars a month, they would not be eligible to live in this development. Because it's not, they're not, we're not gonna be giving them a rental subsidy. They'd have to be able to pay the four hundred thirty-eight dollars.
No, well, say they come out making sixty thousand dollars a year. They wouldn't qualify as an affordable, for this affordable housing, they make too much money.
Is that a question?
Yes, it is.
There's gonna be certain income limits, and we have to, in order to qualify for all the funding that we have, the highest we can go is sixty percent area median income, and that was at today's numbers, was close to, I have to get back to that.
Forty thousand something, I think you said. Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Saying no more questions. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Okay, we are now in a discussion or debate period. If you follow this proposal, line up behind the green microphone. If you're against it, line up behind the red microphone.
Sue Carter, Precinct Five. I just want everyone to understand that what an asset David Haddison and the Housing Authority is. One of the reasons why we can afford to get so many units built on such a small investment from the town versus other towns that have huge investments and small yield is because he really works with the money, with the money and gets so many other grants. Also, we have town sewer and town water, which is a huge help. And I just hope everybody supports this. In my mind, this is a no-brainer when we have such a long waiting list for existing town residents who are desperately in need of housing. So I hope everyone supports this.
David, you can step away from the podium. This is debate section.
Stephanie Bush, oh boy, Precinct Two. I just wanted to thank David for being the voice of individuals who are low-income. I am one of them, and I am not, um, one of those people as, um, as they, excuse me, these, sorry, as they, as some people do think I am a productive member of the community. I have given a lot back to Chelmsford, and I do believe that there are many other individuals who would benefit from this. And I thank God for my parents, because if it wouldn't, if it hadn't been for them, we wouldn't even be able to afford to live in Chelmsford, because we have, you know, children with medical issues and a lot of other things that created an issue where we are low-income housing. And, you know, I just wanna say that I am very appreciative that you've put the time and the energy into a project like this, and I fully support it, because I think that there are many other people who can bring some wonderful things to this town regardless of their income.
Thank you.
Joe Ready, Precinct One. I mean, I appreciate the affordable housing, and I, and I appreciate that we bring it to our community, but I think what irks me as a citizen is we hear things like, you know, this project will stay affordable housing in perpetuity and for, forever. And I'm sure there were many people back in nineteen ninety-one when three sixty Littleton Road was built that felt the same way, and we lost affordable units then. And I don't wanna see the same thing happen to units like this. And so, you know, I have to be honest with you is that, you know, you're up there, you're saying things and all the right things, but I don't necessarily know that I believe them. Thank you.
George Merrill, Precinct Two. He's gonna give us fifty thousand dollars in lieu of taxes. That'll take care of five students. What about the other thirty? There's another three hundred thousand that the town will have to absorb in their tax rate. Thank you.
Paul Haverty, Precinct Seven. I wanted to address the issue with regard to the imperperity. I'm aware, you know, back in the seventies and eighties, when these type of projects first started being approved throughout the state, that they were frequently given specific terms of affordability, generally as long as the affordable housing mortgage on the property was. There was in two thousand and two a case, Ardmore versus Board of Appeals of Wellesley, that stated if a decision does not have that provision, if it's silent on the length of affordability, it's automatically imperperity. I can let you know, as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, there is no circumstance where we're gonna issue a forty B decision that's not going to require it affordable in perpetuity. Thank you.
Next.
Ryan Lantina, Precinct Four. A new definition in Massachusetts, as I understand it, for perpetuity is thirty years. No? Fifty? Look it up. I'm strongly, I'm strongly in favor of this affordable housing project. I fought an affordable housing project on Turnpike Road. There was a single house, it was a rental there. I went to the ZBA three different times, and they were, they were trying to negotiate with this developer who was putting in twenty-eight units, settled on twenty-six units, six of them affordable. The property had all the living space on the second floor. It was not accessible. Yet they should've been following HUD and American Disability Act. They challenged them on both. It was in a wetlands where the property around that, that area had a, a certain, state-certified vernal pond. You can't build within fifty feet of it, and if you find certain little things in it, you can't build within a hundred feet of it. They did it anyway. I, I challenged them on each question. The ZBA said you had to negotiate with these people. My point is that every single one of these units is affordable. It takes down all those other partial units that you'd put out there. In the example I'm giving you, twenty-six units, six affordable. My calculations on the back of a napkin meant that two and a half acre site, if you took a rubber stamp and stamped it fifty-two times around Chelmsford and put twenty-five hundred units in to get enough of those, I think you said, three hundred and fifty affordable units, you would have to put, use up two and a half acres in fifty-two places around town to do the same thing that two of these systems would, would put together. So I'm, I'm strongly in, in favor of this. Two point one, or two point whatever million dollars to get twenty-eight million is fantastic. The twenty-five kids that this, this housing unit will, will draw or currently use, my, my back of napkin numbers here is about six million dollars are cost that the School Committee will have to deal with for the next twenty years or so. They're gonna be here either way, in my opinion, whether, whether you tear down those units and build this thing in, in its place or not. I think this is a great buy for the town, and it eliminates the back of your, the back of those lots that you have in our farmland being devoured by forty Bs. I do not approve of forty Bs. I hate them. I think that you should be able to draw a twenty-five mile circle around each current affordable housing area instead of having artificial lines around each town. That's ridiculous. But this one's a good buy, and I'm, I'm voting yes for this. Thank you.
Jean Whiting, Precinct Two. I guess I'd like to be one of those people that moves in there, 'cause it looks really good. And I hate to be snide, but if we can buy turf fields for our kids to play on, I think we ought to be able to house the people who can't afford to live here, like me.
Tom Paul, Precinct Five, I move the question.
Question has been moved. Takes two-thirds majority to move the question. Let's try for the tickets first. All in favor of moving the question? Moderator recognizes two-thirds. And now we will vote. You're in favor of the article, you vote one. Against it, two. If you wanna abstain, it's three. I remind you, this is a two-thirds vote. The vote is yes, one thirty-seven. No, nine. No abstentions. The article passes. Article nineteen, I have a standing motion to waive the reading of the article. All those in favor, raise your tickets. Opposed? Reading is waived. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm gonna invite Gary Persicetti, our Facility, uh, Public Works Director and the Energy Conservation Committee to come up and give the presentation on this article. This committee has worked diligently over the past couple of years to bring in the, what's called a Energy Management Performance Contract, uh, which we see out there now in fifty-six communities. And what it is, um, is it's, it's a way to take advantage of energy efficiencies and the electricity from solar panel installations on roofs of school buildings and other buildings in the town to achieve a cost savings that we can then use to reinvest to replace the aged equipment in some of the buildings, such as the air handling units at our schools, install LED streetlights in our buildings and, in our streets and so forth. And the key is, as you'll see in the presentation, all of this will be achieved without any impact on the property tax levy. So it's a tremendous way to, uh, to meet our, our capital needs for the school buildings that, as John demonstrated the other night, are forty to fifty-plus years old. Fourteen million will go into the schools, the balance for the municipal side, uh, and again, without any impact on the tax levy. So I invite Gary and the committee to come up and make the presentation. And then, Mr. Mo, Mr. Moderator, we'll also need a, we have the presenter, the, the Energy Management Performance Contract Company behind this. So I would need permission from the town meeting body to, to hear from the presenters.
Could you identify the individuals and their hometown?
Yeah, come, come up to the front of the room.
Just give me a name and hometown, and we'll vote on the two of you at the same time.
My name is Jim Cotton. I'm a resident of Londonderry, New Hampshire.
Alan Houghton, Providence, Rhode Island.
We have these two gentlemen that are presenters, that are not of this community, seeking permission to speak. All those in favor, raise your tickets. Those opposed, permission granted.
Good evening, Gary Persicetti, DPW Facilities Director and Chair of the Energy Conservation Committee. I'm very excited to be here tonight with the Energy Committee. Um, it's been a long road for us, roughly a little over three years, putting us out on the street, working with DOE, our Department of Energy Resources. We put the bid out to the street. We had three companies come back with very favorable ones. The committee selected Johnson Controls as the vendor, and we believe that we're gonna get a good bang for our buck, and we're gonna be able to take, um, a lot of, out of our capital and move it over. I'll let Johnson do the presentation, and myself and the committee are here for questions and answers. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, my name is Jim Cotton. I'm with Johnson Controls. I'm the Area General Manager for our performance contracting business throughout New England. This is Alan Houghton. He introduced himself, but he's our Renewable Energy Manager for New England. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with the town representatives this evening. I'd like to thank the School Committee, Finance Committee, and the Board of Selectmen, all of who, who have heard detailed presentations in regards to this project. Special thanks to the Energy Conservation Committee, who have been working on the project for three years, in concert with the Department of Energy Resources in the state of Massachusetts, as well as Gary Persicetti and Paul Cohen. To start, there's a lot of detail around this project, and we've given presentations, as I indicated, to the various boards and committees. And I know that posted to your website was also detailed information. But I wanna start out with the big picture, and I want you to put this in a little perspective for you. Over the next twenty years, and I've got a slide to this effect coming up, over the next twenty years, the town of Chelmsford will spend forty-five million dollars to provide electricity and natural gas to the schools and town buildings. Assuming a modest escalation of about three and a half percent, that's lower than we've seen ever in the, in the twenty-year period, any given twenty-year period. A yes vote to Article nineteen will reduce that spend by twenty-two million dollars. So forty-five million dollar spend, implement the project, replace aged inefficient, uh, equipment, and that cost will go down by twenty-two million dollars. A yes vote will also reduce current and future capital budgets by nine million dollars. And the entire cost of the project, the twenty-two million dollars, the savings are guaranteed by Johnson Controls. So if we don't achieve those savings by contract and by statute in the state of Massachusetts, we're required to write the town of Chelmsford for a check for the difference. There's no impact to the taxpayers, and the decision is not if to spend the money, but it's about what you're gonna get for that money. So here's a brief agenda, why consider Article nineteen. We'll talk about what is performance contracting. We'll talk about energy conservation measures, uh, basically grouped in three, three groups, capital improvements, energy savings measures, and renewable energy. We'll talk about the project cost and the guaranteed savings, a brief conclusion. And then Alan and I, as well as the committees, will be here to answer any questions. So why consider performance contracting? We're here to solve a problem common among local government and K-12 facilities. These problems have been identified by the town of Chelmsford, not Johnson Controls. And, um, the three problems are a lack of capital, a need to reduce operating expenses, and the need to insulate the town from fluctuating future energy costs. This is a budget-neutral approach to meet these facility and capital needs, and these capital improvements will be done with no increase to the tax rates. The, uh, the issue with lack of capital, I was here Thursday night, and I saw that you passed your capital plan, and I congratulate you for that. Many communities have pulled back at all, and I know that you're investing back into your facilities. However, the needs on the capital plan don't reflect the actual needs of the buildings. You saw a list. It was interesting, um, the ages of the buildings. Many of them were built in the sixties and early seventies, and they have aged inefficient equipment. Uh, Chelmsford currently has a, a ten-year capital plan with eighteen million dollars on it, and it only represents the most pressing needs. About one point five million dollars is available annually for facility-related improvements, and many projects get deferred while more need to get added to the plan. The second issue is a reduction in operating expenses. Everybody knows that local governments throughout Massachusetts and the United States have seen cuts in tax receipts due to the economy. And certainly in the Commonwealth, we've seen, uh, significant reductions in state aid. So communities like Chelmsford need to work with and reduce that operating budget, and this project does that. Currently, the town of Chelmsford spends about one point six two million dollars annually to buy natural gas and electricity for their facilities. And this is higher than it needs to be because of inefficient equipment that's installed in the facilities. In addition to that, operating budget is, consists of repair cost. Again, the repair cost is higher here than it needs to be because of aged inefficient equipment. Both of those can be addressed through this project. The third one is energy cost fluctuation. We all know that energy costs kinda go up and down over time, but if you draw a straight line through the energy cost over the last ten years, you see that the, it goes up over time, up and down, up and down, but eventually it, it goes up. We all see that in our homes. The impact of the solar panels to be installed on both school and town buildings will fix a portion of your electricity use. About forty percent of it will be produced from the solar panels. That'll be produced at about half the cost of the utility company. These needs can be addressed using your current operating budget with no increase to the tax rate. We can better utilize the money already in your budget. Uh, it, again, it's not if you're gonna spend the money, it's what you're gonna get for it. Another reason why performance contracting is because energy, we've used the term ESCO, I've seen that a lot. Energy service companies have the technical expertise in engineering and construction management not available in local government. And we guarantee the savings, which takes the risk away from the town. And we guarantee the savings, which takes the risk away from the town and puts it on Johnson Controls. So what is performance contracting? It's a design-build general construction project for energy efficiency and capital projects. The general construction project will reduce the current $1.6 million annual spend by 43 percent. It's a single source for engineering, project management, and construction, which reduces overhead as compared to bidding separately. Performance contracting is not something that's new. In fact, it's been around for 30 years and widely used at the federal government, within the state government, and K-12 and local government, and I think Paul spoke to that previously. It's established by Mass General Law 2511I, and it was established in Massachusetts in 2006. The Department of Energy Resources has oversight for performance contracting in Massachusetts, as well as the Department of Capital and Asset Management, which certifies energy service companies on an annual basis. Many local communities like Lowell, North Andover, Wakefield, Canton, Swampscott, Redding, Watertown, and Worcester have all engaged in performance contracts. So really, this definition, and I think this thing has a pointer, in short, performance contracting is a way for you to get needed building improvements done by reinvesting the energy cost savings they generate back into the facilities. Again, what are you going to get for the money you're going to spend? Send it to the utility company or reinvest it back into the building. So this is a graph to just illustrate what I'm talking about here. So this right here is now, year zero. This goes back in time by six years. So if you add up the space that's underneath this graph, go out 20 years, this whole space that's in here, that equals $45 million, right? So 1.6 million, it escalates at a modest 3.5 percent per year, less than what we've seen in any 20-year period. This green represents the savings associated with the installation of the equipment. So we replace things like lighting, and we'll get a little bit into the scope later, but things that we would normally think about, windows, attic insulation, building controls, that reduces the consumption that you get from the utility company. We put solar panels on both school and town buildings, which reduces the consumption even more because you're getting the energy from the sun on your building and not from the utility company. There's also widely-used mass renewable energy credits in here, we'll talk about later. But the bottom line is, you take this green area, and you reduce that, you don't send that to the utility company anymore, but you buy new equipment for the facilities. So this total number here is really broken up into two basic areas, energy reduction and solar energy at about $700,000, and solar renewable energy credits at about $400,000. So it's about 1.1 million reduction on a $1.6 million budget. Again, if you do nothing in one, this 1.6 in 20 years becomes $3.1 million paid year after year. So the total cost here, the area in black, goes down from $45 million to $23 million. So I've got three slides in regards to the scope of the project. Again, we're here to answer any questions. I'll bring up a couple of examples, but the way that this slide is outlined is, the energy conservation measures or the scope of work is over here on the left-hand side. Here are the facilities that they're located in. And then down here, just want to make sure that I'm clear here, that there's 35 individual projects located at 11 facilities. So not every facility gets everything that's on the left-hand side, but it's a total of This first slide is capital improvements that are in your current plan. So this represents $3.9 million of current capital plan in your 10-year plan, and this is not only the first year, it's staged out over the course of time, and I'm sure Gary can explain that in more detail if there's a question in regards to that. By getting these things done now, at no impact to the taxpayers, it reduces these projects from being deferred year over year over year and the list getting longer. An example of this is to replace the unit ventilators, and I understand not everybody knows what that is, but when you walk into a classroom, you see a big box along the wall, it's the heating and air conditioning, or just heating most of the times, and fresh air. We're going to replace 207 of those that are currently on your capital plan, all right? So that's in the school building. The furnace and the DX cooling in this building would be replaced under this plan, again, on your capital plan. So again, everything here is on the capital plan. When we go to the next slide, this represents additional capital improvements that are not on the current plan because only those projects with the most pressing need are represented on the current plan. The town has decided to put an annual capital, a limit on your annual capital improvements, and the projects listed here need to get done, however, they have not made the priority cut to get on the current plan. All would eventually have to be done. So let me give you an example of this. The steam to hot water conversion that you see up on the left would be done at the Parker School. That school was built in 1965. That's almost 50 years ago. The original steam piping is still in that building, causing overheating in many classrooms. That all gets ripped out, new piping with hot water to get better control of the temperature and create a better learning environment for the children. The other thing I'd like to say about these projects is planned improvements are always cheaper than emergency. So a lot of this equipment is very old, and I guess what I didn't say on the last one that I was supposed to, those unit ventilators we're talking about are 40 years old, some of them. So you've got aged equipment that if it breaks in an emergency situation, it's going to cost you a lot more to replace than if you do it in an orderly way through planned construction. Another item on here is the LED streetlights. Currently, the town of Chelmsford owns about 2,000 streetlights. They have old technology, and they would be replaced with LED technology, resulting in cost savings, maintenance savings, and increased public safety. These items are kind of traditional energy conservation measures, right? Things that you would think of for your home, like weatherization and replacing attic insulation, putting new windows and things of that nature. So these items create much of the savings necessary to pay for the capital. Remember, this is all paid through savings, and these items drive a portion of that savings. So it's a replace inefficient equipment with new energy-efficient equipment, and again, things like lighting, insulation, weather stripping, and pipe insulation are things that we all have done to our homes. The last slide on the scope of work is solar photovoltaic, fancy name for solar panels. The total size of the solar installation is 2.3 megawatts at both the town and school properties. It will produce about 40 percent of your annual energy usage. Again, these are highly lucrative savings, payback, and they pay for many of the capital items. In this fixed portion, that 40 percent, you take out of that fluctuation that I spoke of earlier in regards to future energy prices. The one thing that I'd also like to point out here is that we aligned, remember the graph? I guess I can go back to it. Shouldn't do this in a presentation, I guess, but we aligned the savings to the 20-year bond term. But the reality is, the solar installation has a warranty period of 25 years and a life expectancy of about 30 years. So those solar panels will continue to generate electricity, which reduces your overall consumption need for 10 years after the project is paid for, representing about $4 million worth of savings to the town of Chelmsford. The next slide, we've talked a lot about the fiscal things associated with the project. I know that's what this body is here to consider, but there are some other benefits, including a reduction of carbon footprint. This is a slide that's created by the federal EPA, and it takes the carbon reduction associated with the energy generation based on the savings with the project and puts it into things that you and I can understand, like taking 431 passenger cars off of the road. Some other things that are not financial in nature are improved learning and working environment. Those 40-year-old unit ventilators will deliver a more consistent temperature in fresh outside air for this, and better acoustics, much less noisy than the current ones. They'll reduce operating costs for repairs, and really, the solar PV is an educational opportunity for our schools, teaching the children about the environment, energy, and efficiency, and renewable energy. So, project cost and guaranteed savings. Again, this is broken down into the three categories of energy conservation measures we spoke of earlier. So the capital improvements, almost $9 million worth of capital improvements. Again, 3.9 million of that is on your current capital plan. The next one is the energy savings, so the kind of the bread and butter, the things like lighting and windows and attic insulation. Again, generating a lot of the savings is about 2.5, and then the solar PV is about 6.5, representing $18.1 million in overall cost. These capital items, again, as I've stated, are either on your capital plan or will be needed to be done in the future. So here's where the savings comes from. Energy savings, capital, and renewable energies generate about $700,000 worth of annual reduction to your utility bill. And I know that the concept of guaranteed savings is probably new, but it's not, it's, you know, 30 years old. So Johnson Controls has about $5 billion worth of guaranteed savings currently in place, and we fully expect the town to realize these savings. If they don't, then Johnson Controls writes you a check for the amount, the delta between what you've actually saved and what we guaranteed. Solar renewable energy credits is a widely-used Massachusetts incentive program, represents about $400,000 worth of savings, and as I indicated earlier, a total savings of about $1.1 million. There was, when you look at the 20-year term, including the cost of money, the interest rate on the $18 million, the net positive cash flow is $146,000 back to the town. So you get all the capital done, $9 million worth it, you get the renewable energy done, that's going to generate $4 million worth of savings that's not represented here, and it's $146,000 cheaper than if you did nothing and just sent the money to the utility company. Last slide, and then we'll have questions. So really, a no vote on Article 9 is continue to send the utility company the same amount of money. We're not talking about a yes vote or a no vote, reducing the annual spend for the town of Chelmsford. The spend's going to stay the same. Continued and increased capital needs, and then you get nothing for the money you send to the utility company, other than obviously the electricity and natural gas. A yes vote reduces current and future capital needs by almost $9 million, moves towards green communities' goals, which Chelmsford is a green community in the Commonwealth in Massachusetts, reduce risk with diversification of utility source, improve learning and working environments, and this is all done with no increase to the tax rates. Thank you very much.
Now we're in a question-and-answer period.
Beth Logan, Precinct 3. Can you go back to the budget-neutral chart? I just want to make sure I understand this. It shows savings in the first year, and I want to understand how confident we are that all these programs, which usually take a while to get implemented and put solar panels in and change, trust me, I've had contractors at my house. It doesn't happen instantly. So why do we actually think we're going to get that much in year one? And the second question is, what happens in year 10 there that makes it pop up?
Great. So the construction schedule that we've put forward would have construction complete by September of '14, so before the kids come back next year. So it is a 15-month construction cycle, and this represents the savings after construction. All right? That's the first question. The second thing is, this is the solar renewable energy credit, which again is an incentive program that is established by the state of Massachusetts. It's a 10-year program. So those incentives go away after year 10. Once you're in the program, you're guaranteed for a 10-year term, and then they go away. And I think those numbers were represented in the cash flow as well.
And are we guaranteed that the state is going to continue that when this program starts? Like, do we know if come July, they've canceled, they're going to cancel the program?
It's established by Mass General Law, so it is established, and it will be there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. If you're in favor, please, I'm sorry, it's question and answer. Any microphone.
Curtis Barton, Precinct 9. She asked one of my questions, I'll ask the other one. Do we know of any, what impact this will have on overall rates, i.e., will it affect the residents of the town or other towns? Do we have any idea on that? Do we have any data?
When you say rates, could you clarify that?
Electrical rates, say, or natural gas. If we're saving all this money, is that going to affect other people's rates?
No. No impact.
Thank you.
Nick DeSilvio, Precinct 5. Quick question. You stated early in the presentation that it's a cost reduction in our annual capital budget by $9 million, but coming off of our actual capital budget today would only be about 3.9. What's the difference between those two items? What are the capital items that's the difference there?
Yeah, the $3.9 million are the items here.
That's currently on the capital?
Currently on the plan, and I think Gary has put together a slide, we don't have it tonight, but it was presented to the various boards and committees on the actual year that they come off. These slides, this slide here, are additional capital improvements that need to be done based on the age of the equipment, but not on the current plan.
Not on the plan.
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Jerry Low, Precinct 9. I'm trying to understand what your relationship is to the town and why your company is presenting to us and not XYZ Company.
I can answer there, you can answer it. You want to do it?
Good evening. My name is Bob Andrews. I live on Tadmuck Road and have since 2001. I am currently in my fourth year as a member of your Energy Conservation Committee. To answer your question specifically, sir, Johnson Controls was one of three companies that answered a publicly advertised request for proposals. Proposals were evaluated by the committee. Presentation was made to Selectmen with a recommendation based on the proposal submitted, which included reviewing two of our buildings and providing recommendations for improvements that Johnson Controls be selected.
Okay, so they're already selected.
They were, yes. They went through a public RFP process.
This was over a five-year period?
No, 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 sir.
I'm sorry.
I understand, it's confusing. The three years has been three years of my life writing the RFP.
Gotcha.
Three times because the Department of Energy Resources changed the template document twice.
So I'm still trying to understand how this changes, how we tie into the capital budget in terms of what they do for us, how that takes out of our capital budget or reduces it. I can't quite put those two together, and why, if we just did this ourselves and contracted it out, it would be any different.
Can I try to help you with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
So for the first year, there is a certain amount of capital that was voted at this meeting previously that gets removed and transferred to their project. There is future capital that this meeting would be asked to provide funds for that are also removed from future capital and transferred to their project. It all gets done at the same time, which frees capital for other projects.
Okay. And the last question?
Tom Moran, Precinct 8. I have a question for the town manager. If this article passes, and all of the other new bonding monies we have approved on the warrant, what is our total borrowing of new money on bonds based on this and the other articles?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have $18 million being requested to borrow here. I think David Hetterson through the community preservation earlier this evening got approval for $2 million to the community preservation, so I guess that makes it over $20 million. And then we have the turf fields through community preservation, which was 1.2, and then we had 800 local be funded from the field revenue. So we're looking at roughly about a $23 million borrowing. And to answer that question, we brought these plans to Standard and Poor's, our rating, credit rating agency, and explained to them what the town was contemplating, and their assessment, and we've reported that at the Selectmen's meeting and put it online, they believe that this proposed projects are within the capacity of the town, and in fact, they actually noted that most of our debt is paid off over a 10-year period, so there are no concerns. a 10-year period, so there are, there are no concerns raised by our credit rating agency if we were to move forward with these projects.
And second question for the town manager. What is our bond rating, and has it changed over the last five years?
Yes. I'm pleased to report that our bond rating has, has been restored over the last five years to a AA bond rating, which is the highest, I believe, in the town's history, a AA bond rating. And as I noted in the, in the in the credit rate, the credit rating agencies report from Standard and Poor's, they noted our, our successful practices, and again, they also noted our successful, strong management principles as well. So these are the types of programs that indicate the capacity of a community, not only in terms of fiscal capacity, but also management capacity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Glenn Thorne, Precinct 5. Two technical questions. The first is, are energy savings based on kilowatt-hours generated by the solar panels, or is it a fixed number that Johnson Controls is going to offer on a year-by-year basis?
The, the savings are based on units, both on generation and on efficiency. So when we replace an old inefficient equipment, piece of equipment, it generates so many units. Those units are then trans, turned into dollars if there's a shortfall. So I can't deliver kilowatt-hours to you, but I can deliver a check.
I mean, if we're putting in solar panels, did I hear that correctly?
Yep, that's correct.
And those generate kilowatt-hours back into the grid?
No, they are what they call on your side of the meter. So basically, they go right into the building, and they're used before, in layman's terms, used before you get energy from the grid.
Okay, that, that answers my question. They are based on energy use, which is billed at kilowatt-hours. I've got that part. Second part, probably a little bit more important. I know Johnson Controls has been around for a while, but let's say you have obligated yourself to pay a check back to the town in the future or at milestones through the future. Is there an insurance policy or a bonding or something? Should Johnson Controls go bankrupt? Hopefully, that won't happen, but should they go bankrupt, is the interest of the town of Chelmsford guaranteed?
There currently, it's a first-party obligation to the, to Johnson Controls. So there's a contract in place that obligates Johnson Controls. I guess the way that I would answer the question is that what's the real risk to the town of Chelmsford? If our track record is, we have $5 billion, and we paid out 1.5 million last year, that it's less than half of 1%. So the risk is mitigated, but you are a, basically, it's a first-party guarantee. There's no bond or insurance policy.
Thank you.
Next. Thank you.
Jerry Low, Precinct 9. The 18 million that we're, we're voting, is that for this year? I'm confused when you say we're going to take 3 million out this year and so much kind of come back to us.
Yes.
Why are we asking for 18 million on the first year?
It's, yeah, it's a construction project, so once we've started construction, we would build the $18 million worth of construction over the course that I outlined previously. It would be done by the start of school next calendar year. So it's all done now, and the energy savings are garnered over time.
So we are asking for 18 for the first year?
Yes.
Do you have any other towns where you have a history of this, and you can kind of walk us through what happened, how long it took, glitches, good things, bad things, and what savings there were, and?
Sure. We've, we've done a number of projects, about 2,500 across North America locally. Swam Scott, Hamilton, Wenham, Wakefield, Watertown, Canton, probably forgetting a few in there. According to DOE-R, and the manager spoke to this earlier, 56 towns have done these projects across Massachusetts. This is not a new process. You're not, you are not breaking new ground. It's tried and true. It's been around for 30 years. So all those projects were similar in nature, where energy efficiency and renewable energy was applied to the facilities, reducing their overall utility bill. So the, the process was the same as here in Chelmsford.
Thank you. Next.
I think Paul wants to say something.
Yeah, just to finish that up, Jerry. The closest to us is the city of Lowell. City of Lowell used a different vendor. They used Amaresco. It was reported in the Lowell Sun about nine months ago and lauded. I think their project was $23 million, and it was lauded in terms of their efficiency and progressiveness. We kind of sort of sat there and said, yeah, we're coming right behind you. So yes, this is, this is what's going on right now in the industry in terms of the ability, in terms of solar. And I think really, it was just sort of noted last week by the governor and reported in the Globe, you know, it really reflects the state's commitment to solar photovoltaic or solar panel electricity generation and the efficiencies, and that's why the 10-years credits are in the state that are guaranteed to fund this project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Paul, stay up there. Karen DiNato, Precinct 8. I understand all the capital improvements and all of that. Can you just give us a high-level, start to finish, the whole cycle of where the money goes? We're borrowing 18. It's going to cost us this much per year to bond it. We're going to spend this much. We're going to get this much. Can you just kind of bring us full circle so we can put it together?
Yeah, sure. We're looking at an $18 million project, of which $14 million is going into the school facilities, the balance and general government, including streetlights and so forth. So you take $18 million, you borrow it over a 20-year period, you've got a payback period of payments each year over a 20-year period of over $1 million. And that's why when he spoke earlier about the $1.1 million savings in the first year, and then it goes on, that's what happens. So in essence, we're out borrowing the, the project, and we're paying back principal and interest. So the question becomes, well, then how do you fund that principal and interest payment annually? And that's done from the two sources. The savings and efficiencies by having more energy-efficient, you know, heating and electrical systems, and two, the electricity savings from having the solar panels on the roofs of the schools and the DPW building. That's the big picture of how it works. And so what's going on here is, we're able to address inefficient aged equipment like air handling units. Let me give you an example. If we didn't have this plan, or if this goes down in defeat, then what's going to happen is perhaps next year, we're going to come in and say, we need $975,000 to put all the air handlers at Chelmsford High School because they're the original from 1974. What's going to happen is, that's 975. So you then take that number, put it into our capital budget, which is $3 million per year, and then you put in their technology needs, and then basically, you've now wiped out the school capital investment for that whole year. And so, and then, and then, of course, you've got the other parts that go into our $3 million capital. So instead, what we're doing is, is we're taking a, a macro look of the needs over a 20-year, over a 20-year return and investing $18 million in a, in a project, but it has no impact on the tax levy because instead of writing the check to National Grid, we're, we're going to achieve the savings, as I described, from the energy efficiency and the electricity generation to pay the debt service. So that's, that's how this whole project works. What does that mean, big picture for the town? Does that mean, Paul, you're only going to ask for $1.8 million in capital next year? The answer is going to be no, because as we noted in the backlog, when someone was up at the, at the meeting, we were looking at the capital article, we had over $9 million in capital that was been deferred and pushed back into next year, and then it keeps getting pushed out. What, what this will enable us to do is not only to do these improvements that are energy-related, but we'll also be able to go in and do other non-energy-related improvements, such as the bathrooms at, you know, at some of the schools that have been existing and so forth, and meet some of the non-energy-efficient needs that are still in our buildings. What does that get us long-term? Basically, it prevents us, and basically enables us not to come to you, like what you're seeing happening right now in Borica, and in Chooksbury, and in Drake it, where they're coming in saying, we need school building projects. You know, Borica is, is gone undetected elementary school. They're now putting together a statement of interest and need to replace Borica High School. Well, the McCarthy School in Chelmsford is the same age as the Borica High School that they want to replace in Borica. So instead of us coming and saying, we want to replace a school, we're going to invest in those systems that they say are failing in Borica, the electrical systems, the HVAC systems, and so forth. So basically, what we're doing is, is we're basically going to maintain and reutilize and reinvest in our buildings so that we can stay there and not come in with a mammoth type of building project that, that will really have an impact in the community. So that's what we're trying to do, and that, and so therefore, my goal is, I work in a 100-year-old building every day. We're going to be able to stay in the McCarthy School, the Parker School, and so forth, Harrington and so forth, so that we can continue to operate those in a modern, cost-effective manner without coming before you with a replacement or a total renovation project. No one's going to have a ribbon cutting for an HVAC unit. But, but those are the type of things that, that, that are hidden costs when we're running 26 buildings in the community. Those are the type of hidden costs that aren't, that aren't, you know, that aren't all that visible, but really are the guts and hearts and soul of our building operations. And so that's why the, the committee has worked so hard over the past couple of years to achieve this type of project, again, to, to enable us to continue to stay where we are, and again, not have an impact on our, on our property taxes.
Okay, so I see that, it sounds like we're going to be funding this bond with this money that we're saving each year on all of our energy.
Exactly.
So are we going to have more mon, are we going to have more money in savings than we're going to need to pay out in funding?
No.
No.
That's why they structured over a 20-year period, so that doesn't happen. And, and, you know, so basically, you can see, they structure the type of projects, and basically, they, they fit it, they fit everything they could in to make the numbers work. When it came down to the end, and it was a discussion at the school committee about a month ago, do you want the solar array behind the Harrington School, which we think could bring some educational purposes and so forth, and there was a discussion of, well, what's it going to look like? How's it going to affect the parking? And at the end of the day, the choice was, well, we can pull that out, but if you do that, we're not going to have the funding to replace the, the air conditioning HVAC system over at the center school, in terms of, you know, what's last in, what's first out of the project. And so that's the type of discussions we had, was how to make it all comprehensive so that we could make, make it all balance out. There were certain items that didn't make the list because they just weren't, you know, energy efficient, but basically, that's how the analysis took place, and that's how this project works. So you have, you have this trade-off between foregone utility payments versus the debt service.
Thank you.
Bill Griffin, Precinct 9. Question for the development team. This may be Paul as well. I'm not sure. But given the size of the, the capital investment and the location that you just alluded to, to part of the array, Paul, there's some significant equipment we're talking about here that's going to be exposed in areas that are heavily trafficked and will be even more after the approval of the fields the other night. I'm curious, after making that kind of investment, what kind of extra protections we'll have in place, and what kind of replacements would be available as part of this contract, is question number one.
Well, again, we, we, if, the one that, the ground-mounted array, which is the only ground-mounted array, would be over at the Harrington School. That will be fenced off and secured and landscaped so it looks pretty and so forth, but those assets will be insured. So if, if there's some vandalism or done to that type of thing, then, then in essence, we would have insurance coverage on that type of situation. Fortunately, we're not seeing a lot of that taking place, either in town, at the, as we all, many of us know, the Chelmsford Water District has a tremendous-sized solar array in a rather remote area. There have been no issues there, and now you, you can't help but drive across the Commonwealth, whether it's on the highways or other areas, with solar arrays are right aside from you. And so far, that hasn't been a, a big problem.
Just a passing comment. I'll make a note that we did have some youngsters on the roof at McFarland not too many years ago. Second question would be in terms of the management of the environmental controls of, of the buildings and stuff. Do we retain local control over that, or is that managed off-site?
We, we control it like we do now. What we have now, because of costs, is we have zones only. So in other words, if you went into the average elementary school, it might have four zones, main office, right wing, left wing, first floor, second floor. This will give us individual controls to every classroom, which is what we'd like to do, which is, happens to be in South Row, because South Row had the univents replaced in 2007.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Claire Ginat, Precinct 7. First question is contractual. Is legal reviewing this? I had an opportunity to look a little bit at the contract of a neighboring city online, and there's a lot of protections that are built in for the municipality. An earlier questioner asked about something that made me wonder, is there a performance bond? Is there a payment bond? Are our interest rates that are assumed for the debt borrowing protected somehow? What if the savings is not there because it costs us more to bond than you assumed in your model? All of these sort of things. I assume, since we're not new to the dance on this, our legal counsel is taking care of all of that for us?
Yes. What, what happens is, when the contract is finished, the contract goes back to DOE-R, and it goes to our legal at the same time. That's the way it's written up through the Department of Energy Resources. They both review it. It comes back. There's one final review, and then it gets sent out to the companies that bid it. So everything's inclusive, as we said, including the guarantee that they have to provide. If they do not provide the units that they say they will at the end of any given year.
And even to get to this point, we did that. For example, when we did the contract to have them come in and do the study, and as you can tell by this presentation, they went in and did an extensive study of all 20, 26 buildings. We sent, not only is that contract, RFP is, as described, was rewritten by the state twice, but when we finally got it and was, in the final form, we then sent it to Coltman and Page. Rick Holland, on behalf of the firm, reviewed that contract, then sent it back to us. So yes, we're not only taking the external state review, but we're doing our own legal review at Town Council.
All right, good. Thank you. My second question is, it's kind of hard, but part of this is the solar, and I assume, well, the rest of it is replacement of equipment, regular things that would have been in the capital plan, as you said. Are they all due to be replaced because this work will all get done in the next 12 months, or are we accelerating the replacement of something, anything before its useful life is complete?
We're not accelerating anything. Part of the issues that we've had is, I'm on my 14th year here, and what we've done over the, the last 13 years is, we, as a committee and as a town, have worked on what we call a low-hanging fruit first, which is the ones that have paybacks first, two years and less, and then when you're done that, you go after the ones that have four years and less, until you get to your higher-ticket items. What happened to us is, we've done the boilers, all full condenser modulating. We've done windows, which is a high payback, not in money, but it is in services that you get. We've done all the roofs with the extra insulation, and now we're at the point where the ticketed items that are left are very high in cost and probably out anywhere 20 to 24 years in payback, if you were to do them. So what the Energy Conservation Committee did is, we did not put out the standard ESCO. The standard ESCO, like Lowell did, basically, was simply, they call in these companies, they say, go through our buildings and find all this stuff, come back to us and tell us what you can do for us and what you can save. We gave them a list, and that was that first-page item. And we said, these items must be on there. And then they find other things to go along with that. So we knew that we wanted to take this off our capital for the reasons being that we know that we were hitting a wall, meaning that we would keep extending out and standing it out, and our 10-year capital would be more than 25 years to get those goods done. And that's only the 3.9 million.
Okay. I have two more questions.
Thank you.
But I'll go to the end.
Jerry Low, Precinct 9. Just a couple of questions. Is this a fixed-price contract?
Yes.
Definitely. No, no ways out of that. It's definitely fixed price. There's no caveats or
Nope.
Ways that it can get it ex, okay. I know solar, I love solar, that you were looking at solar. Have we looked at wind and geothermal, and is there a reason why we haven't or have?
Yep. Wind, we looked at early on. Chelmsford does not really have many spots for wind, and a couple of spots that we do have, you do not have the proper dropage of the tower if it was to fall.
How about?
Because of the height of it, which is what you have to have.
Okay, and geothermal?
Geothermal is, is really used in old buildings like this because there's a lot of digging to do. It's more in new construction that they'll get into, and you have to have pretty good-sized areas to do that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Fantastic. Precinct 2. Is the AC going to be in all these buildings?
Absolutely not. They are not now, and it will not be in all of the buildings.
So who is getting AC and who isn't?
This building will get AC again. Town offices will get AC again. The high school will now get AC and computer labs, which are done right now by split, split units or a, basically, a wall air conditioner put into the room because they were added as computer rooms later on.
Okay. My other question is, is, is this programs that run all these schools, whether it be air, heat, whatever, who's running that and where is it being run?
Right now, it's run out of my office, and it will continue to. And at home, I can do it as well.
Can I ask you one, can I go one more?
End of the line.
In the presentation I looked at online, I saw that one of the, in the, the slide that allocated the dollars among the various buildings, included approximately $900,000 of investment related to the new DPW building. Will that affect the amount of future phased costs on that building, or can you explain what that is?
No, I believe that's the solar. That's the solar array that goes on, and what it will do is reduce our costs, as he said. We get the savings before, so it gets generated said, we get the savings before, so it gets generated directly to us. So, we'll get the savings on our energy bill.
So, this is an investment that we didn't anticipate in the original DPW project? Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
My second question is regarding the solar that goes on the roofs of buildings, how safe, I mean, do they stay up there, are they heavy, is it a big weight load, what happens when it snows?
For starters, I mean, we, we've done three solar projects ourselves, we have one on the library, one on the high school, and one on the parka right now. And I could just tell you, in six years that we've started, panels weighed somewhere between 4.8, 3.8, now they're down to 1.2, 1.5 in weight, which has changed it a lot. Secondly, a engineering, an engineering firm out of Methuen was hired to review all the roofs and make sure that they're structurally safe. And then the second thing is, as you know, through our capital plan, we've done extensive work to our roofs, making all these buildings viable to have solar for the life of the roof itself.
So, the life of the solar panel is what?
25 years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Fantastic, Precinct Two. You said that you'll be in control of all the controls. Now, here's my question, what time do you get in? Because if you've got individual rooms and only one person controlling it, what if there's a problem in multiple places, how are you going to handle this?
First thing I could tell you is I have no final design, because it's not there yet on the system that is being installed, that's all part of the next process out of tonight, after tonight. What I can tell you is in our current system, we won't get individual rooms because we don't have it, but my phone will be dialed if there's a boiler down currently.
By who?
By, by the system itself.
Okay.
The energy management system will let us know that.
And I assume it's all going to be on timers such as lights?
Oh, yes.
Security. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Latina, Precinct Four. I noticed the, most of the savings here is, is 40%, I guess, positive revenue flow for solar. And my question is, we replaced, spent $30 million replacing a lot of the high school roof, the McCarthy roof, the Byham roof, we did the Center School roof, DPW, we were told, town meeting was told that it could not handle solar, and I guess now it can. Can you tell us that you've super-supported those rooftops to support the snow load we had, not this winter, but last winter, when people were shoveling it off, and how you would shovel off snow with solar panels in the way?
Sure. First of all, if, if no one's aware, during that time when we had the excess snow, and people were spending thousands of dollars to shovel off roofs, some to the tune of over 150, we again, were working with a company that has been looking at our central fire station now for the last six years, making sure that the floor stays safe until we build our new one. And during that period of time, we were doing our current six-month review, and I spent some time with the gentleman who was a structural engineer, and his recommendation to us is there's really no need to go shoveling your roofs based on what you have, there's more of a need to go up there and shovel any drifts level, and then you find your drains, which are kind of easy to do, because they produce a little heat, which would show them through the snow anyway, and you do what's called a spider. You go about four feet out, four or five times, and then what that does is the sun that you do get, which is hot enough during the day, will continue to melt it and give you the ability to do that without spending the extra dollars to shovel off the roofs.
And Johnson Controls looked at that design, and, and given that the drifts on the roof were, are, for this, again, the snow that we had just two years ago, the drifts are caused by impediments on the roof, and I'm, I'm assuming these solar panels at night, when the snow's blowing, will have a six-foot pile of snow over them and block completely from, from being black, if you will.
So, to answer your question, Johnson Controls has done a structural analysis of each and every building. The first thing you do is you figure out the amount of solar panels that'll fit on it, and then the associated weight, their ballasted systems, that goes to a structural engineer who comes out and takes measurements of the, of the building structural steel, and then does a calculation. So, it meets the new building code. These things sit just, you know, we see pictures where they sit at like a 45-degree angle, these things actually sit at five degrees, you know, so they're like, almost flat. So, there isn't this big, huge snowdrift issue.
So, we would not be shoveling the rooftops in, in this situation? My, my second question is-
Thank you, got your third question, Brian.
Okay.
George Merrill, Precinct Two. What is the efficiency of the photocells you're going to install? They're going to be installed flat in a 42 degrees north latitude, what is their efficiency?
Yeah, I, George, I don't, I don't know the exact answer of that. It's, the reason that you lay them flat is because of, of the weight. If you put them up at 45-degree angles, that you have to have a lot of ballast there. The savings that has been calculated is based on a five-degree panel angle at this longitude and latitude, so here in Chelmsford. So, I, I don't have the exact answer to that question, though, on the efficiency of the individuals.
In other words, you don't know whether they're 50% efficient, or 25% efficient, or 10% efficient?
Well, they are the most efficient that are available on the marketplace, because that's how they become cost-effective. So, taken into consideration in our calculations is the efficiency. You're asking me if I know the exact number right here, and I apologize, I, I don't know that exact number.
Well, that's very critical in this latitude, thank you. Next.
Dennis Sheehan, Precinct Four. This is probably for town manager. Currently, I believe the utilities are in the school budget, but your school utilities would be included in the school budget. If this goes through, would the savings from the project actually reduce that item?
Yes.
And, and would that savings come back to the town, or would that just be absorbed by other school items? How are we going to handle that?
Well, as we, as we described, the, 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 the net savings are essentially zero. So, what ends up happening is, you're correct, when we, we achieve the energy utility savings in the school, general government budget and so forth, then those numbers are going to come down, those numbers will have to be reduced, and then we'll set this money aside to pay the debt service payment on the, on the cost of the project.
So, the school budget for utilities would come down?
Yes, exactly.
And that would bring the entire school budget down by that amount?
Exactly.
And that amount would be set aside for the project?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Latina, Precinct Four. My, my second set of questions, two questions each, is around the financing of this. If, if this is such a great idea for the town of Chelmsford, and Johnson Controls is talking about the, the savings to us, the, the chart on page 49 of the pre-town meeting document is showing a negative cash flow for the first five years, and from my calculations, we're spending about $18 million. Why wouldn't Johnson Controls fund it instead of the Chelmsford taxpayers if this is such a great financial benefit to the town?
I, I guess the question is, is why would they? You know, the, the bottom line is, Brian, and we discussed this at the pre-town meeting, is, yes, with the, in the annual savings, you know, it basically assumes that there's a little bit of negative cash flow in the early years, and then it gets made up, and as you said, the net value of it is about $100,000 over the period, and that took in that calculation. When it becomes reality, what's, what's going to happen is, is we're going to get a known interest cost, we're going to structure the borrowing for when our, our principal payment is due, as was noted earlier, it's not going to be completed until September of 2014. So, what we will do is, we will borrow the money this July, and then we won't have our first principal payment due till 2014, so that we can avoid that type of a negative cash flow. But the other thing that I wanted to inform you, and, and I spoke at the pre-town meeting and those others, this is not the only energy efficiency aspect that this town has done in the past couple of years. Basically, nine months ago, the Board of Selectmen approved the approval of a, of a solar net metering contract. What's the solar net metering contract? Basically, what that is, is we, we have agreed to purchase five megawatts of, of electrical power from a solar farm that's being constructed in the town of Bolton, that's being financed by Simkappa Corporation. That will achieve the town a savings of, of around $200,000 per year on that contract, so that's going to be a savings to the community. In addition, we've also rebid in the last few months our, our, our natural gas supply contract, as well as our electrical supply contract. So, and what we're seeing near is, we're also going to achieve a savings in, in those accounts. For example, with our electrical supply, we're currently paying $10 and 80, 10.84 or 5 cents per kilowatt hour for electricity right now. That's going to drop down to 8.3 cents per kilowatt hour, July 1st, 2014, and then, and then on July 1st, 2017, it's going to drop down to 7.5 cents. So, we're going to achieve savings of $200,000 starting in that period as well. And then in addition, we also have rebid our natural gas supply, and, and we're going to achieve a 17% reduction in our natural gas savings, or another $72,000. So, at the end of the day, when all these actions are up, we're clearly saving in our, in our utility consumption costs, where we'll have a positive cash flow, but more importantly, when all this is done, all of the electricity consumed by the town of Chelmsford and its school and general government buildings will be produced by solar panel construction, either on the roof of our buildings or from the solar farm out in the town of Bolton, which is, again, what puts us to the forefront of our green communities. Thank you.
And second question, yes, sir?
Will you indulge me? Did everyone catch that? Nearly all of the electricity used by your town buildings will be generated by solar photovoltaics. That means no greenhouse gases are making your electricity. That's huge. That means you're the- It, it's safe to say that Chelmsford is the first town in the Commonwealth to do that. This is a big deal. And as, as excited as Mr. Hettison was about his housing project, I am excited about this, okay? Thank you.
My, my second question is around the facilities question. Is Johnson Controls now stepping in with personnel and backing up Mr. Persketti's team? And around that question, the town library for the last three weeks has had the lights on about 6:00, 6:00 PM, and despite calls and the, and the lights around the center, something as simple as turning the timers and resetting timers seems to be a problem. Is that something that we're going to have computerized, or have some sort of solar device in there that will automatically do that, or are you doing it with people?
The whole purpose of an energy management system is to reduce the human element, so somebody forgets to flip a switch. The controls will automatically turn stuff on and turn it off based on a fixed schedule. And, and again, it's that human element, element that we're eliminating to get control of the facilities to be able to achieve the energy savings.
The computer will reset itself for daylight savings time, does that help?
Is that the question?
Personnel, the number of facilities personnel will not go up or down, and Johnson Controls will not add people, their people to our, our town facilities for us to help us get there?
That's a correct statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Kowalski, Precinct One. Who's going to be responsible for the maintenance of the solar panels?
The town will.
So, that, that would be a cost to the town to repair them?
Yeah, if there's any damage, but I mean, as we said, most of these are on top of roof. All our roofs have parapets too, which makes it so that we really don't have any problem with wind and-
There's no warranties with solar panels?
Oh, yeah, 25 years. But that's not going to be if someone damages them, but if they're, if it's a cause based on just workmanship, it'll be replaced by the company.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Lana Olencheck, Precinct Eight. I only have a quick question, Gary. Will these solar panels be manufactured in the United States or China?
Right now, the, the costs that we're carrying, they're manufactured in China. The, the delta between US, even if you can get them, right, because we've seen all the news, is pretty substantial. So, we, we brought this before the town, and they're from China.
Will they put a "Made in China" sticker on the back?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. The, I know that the racking system, so there's really three major components of a solar, there's the panels, which everybody sees, but the racking system is made in the US as well as the inverters, which is the electrical devices that turn the sunshine into energy.
Thank you. The presenters may now step away from the podium. If anybody needs to talk to you, they have to go through the moderator. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
I have one more question. Will Wagner, Precinct Eight. I didn't see it in the presentation, I was just curious, if the town is going to be responsible for the maintenance of these, does the projected budget include training of the town maintenance workers?
Yes, there's training on all installed equipment, including the solar panels. Thank you.
Nancy Arroway, Precinct One. What percentage of these improvements, on a dollar basis, are already included in the five-year capital improvement program?
3.9 million.
Is that a percentage?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, percentage?
I'm sorry.
Well, 3.18 is, oh, 25 maybe?
So, it's about 25% of the five-year plan?
Right, but you've got to remember, there's, there's another 8 million that wasn't on our capital plan that is getting done by this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fantastic, Precinct Two. Who's going to be trained for these, to train, to run these units?
All, all the facilities employees will be.
Who is?
We have 11 on that staff that would all be trained, we have two electricians, one HVAC, I'm sorry, one plumber, we have general maintenance mechanics.
Okay. Why are we not getting AC in all these buildings?
We can't afford it. None of these buildings, most schools do not have fully AC, it's not the norm, especially where technically, we're not in school during those heavy months, I know there's a little burden at both ends, but I'd imagine if they went to school summers, it would have to really seriously be looked at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
School committee?
The school committee recommends approval.
Okay, we are now in a debate section, please use the pro and con microphones, and the presenters need not be there. If they want to ask you a question, they have to come through the podium. Debate section.
Matt Hanson, Precinct One. I've been the liaison to the Energy Conservation Committee for going on four years now, and I've got to say, this is a project that has really come from the town, and the town volunteers in this committee that have worked hard for three years now to make this happen, walking through the school buildings and identifying what needed to be done. So, it's really been an organic process, I want to thank all of them for their work, and I think it's amazing that we can get this type of investment into our town buildings without having to ask the taxpayers for any additional money. I think it's just fantastic, and the only way it's possible is because of the hard work of all those individuals, so I just want to thank them.
Tom Moran, Precinct Eight. Couple of issues that I would like to point out, because I recommend that we not approve this article. Natural gas, because of the fracking that's going on in this country, Wall Street Journal ran an article recently, we're becoming the largest exporter in the world of energy. In fact, in Europe, the price of US gas is so low that the Russians have had to drop their prices, and they supply most of the natural gas in Europe by 25%. Now, natural gas prices are going to seriously come down in this country because of the huge supply. My other point is, I think it's time to retire some bonds. Every time we pay off a bond, we float a new bond. We haven't reduced the tax rate for over 10 years. Now, when you look back, okay, and we have a lot of elected officials in this room who ran, and I'll bet almost every one of them spoke about protecting the taxpayer and taxes. Now, if you look back on the last 10 years, and you increase taxes 2.5% a year, that's not 25%, because you're increasing- that's not 25 percent because you're increasing 2.5 percent of the previous year's taxes. So you're probably closer to 40 percent when you look at taxes and you keep adding 2 percent to the taxpayers. And I think it's time to remember the commitment that a lot of people in this room made to the town. I mean, it's ridiculous. You know, we, we, our tax rate, we compare ourselves in some of the presentations earlier on schools to Franklin. Well, let's compare ourselves to some of the communities here in the area. Our tax is very, very high. And you do have an aging population, me included unfortunately, and a lot of these people are on fairly fixed income. And you're killing them. You know, this may be a great idea for three or four years, but if the tax, if, if, if natural gas prices come down anywhere close to what's predicted, the savings here isn't going to be real because you would have realized a lot of the savings anyway by staying on the existing systems if you run natural gas because you're not going to pay as much. And we're talking about oil here. We don't burn a lot of oil in Chelmsford. I think everybody has to stand back and not look at each article in this warrant. Once in a while, you have to look at the big picture and say to yourself, is it time to say no? Is this the right time to do it? And I submit to you, it's not the right time.
Hi, Mr. Moderator, Kentasi, precinct two. I have one more quick question. If they, we're running this...
Who do you want to ask the question to?
Gary, if we're running this system and say for whatever reason, there's been, there's a mistake been made in running a building and it didn't run as efficiently as it should have, does that come back on the town or does the cost of that get covered by Johnson Controls?
The cost should be covered by Johnson. The one, the one issue that we're doing in, in Chelmsford, the requirement per DOER is a one-year and full evaluation and submitted to them. Johnson is going to basically do four to us because they want to know what's going on at all times. And then we'll submit the one, one a year to DOER. So that's how we, we plan on keeping it in check.
Okay. I like the idea. I just, I'm just immensely worried about who's performing this so that we can get the full benefit of doing this project.
Sure.
Thank you.
George Merrill, precinct two. If Johnson Controls can't perform over time and it appears they won't give us any guarantees, if they don't, we lose our 18 million and we still have to maintain our buildings. Thank you.
Sam Polton, precinct eight. I move to call the question.
There's a motion to call the question. I see four people waiting to speak. It takes two-thirds to call the question. Let's try the tickets. All those in favor of moving the question, raise the tickets. That means debate stops. All those opposed to moving the question, raise the tickets. We're going to the electronic voting. A yes vote stops debate, a no vote continues debate. As soon as you see 35, go. The yeses are 79, the no's are 63, the motion fails, we're still in debate. We're on the negative side now.
Brian Latina, precinct four. There was an article in the Lowell Sun, I hope everybody read it a couple of days ago, talking about solar energy. In, in Massachusetts, we're on the same solar plane as, as Minneapolis, Minnesota, as Portland, Maine. We get about 13 percent value out of these solar panels and when they're laid nearly flat, as we'd heard, my guess is it's, it's even less than that. Solar energy has come around again. I, I saw it in California about 20, 30 years ago. And it kind of died out because the government stopped funding it. The reason it's valuable in Massachusetts and, and the, the states that are currently using it is because the government is funding it. That would be the federal government and some, some state governments. If you look, it's California, it's New Jersey of all places. These are the places that have lots of solar energy. I have a company that we went up on the roof over in Woburn during the big snowstorm. And wherever there were impediments on the building, the bluff on the building, we had up to 10 feet of snow on it. If it had rained, that building would have collapsed. 140,000 square feet of building probably would have collapsed. The other building in Andover that we moved into had a similar problem. They had to go up and, and shovel it and they were able to use a snow, a snow blower. We couldn't use it on our building. Down in New Jersey, this, this last, just before the voting season, there was a hurricane that blew through. That hurricane demolished all these solar panels that New Jersey had put up on their telephone poles. In fact, behind one of my buildings, the, the solar panels on these, on these telephone poles were sheared off about 10 feet off the top, took the power lines out for a month. There is no savings when you look at that kind of damage done by these things that are very new and only done with government Monday, money. You don't see any buildings in Chelmsford in the private industry with solar panels on them and there's a reason for that. It's not economical yet. The cash flow that we're talking about and I ask a question on doesn't kick into positive. In other words, you're going to spend money to put these things up and hope in six years it's actually going to get positive money back. I brought up a point about facilities and our, our capacity to take care of these, these devices. We're putting on 26 buildings, I think we have 26 buildings. I'm not sure how many we're going to put up, but we're going to put them on rooftops and then we're going to try to get the guys that take care of our other functions, bathrooms and, and that sort of thing. 11 people plus a couple of electricians and a plumber are going to have to maintain these things. And as I indicated, for the last three years in a row, when the sun started, started changing and it's 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, it's still sunny out, the library lights are, parking lights are on, the library beams are on. At one point, it was on for almost two months. We can't set the timers. We don't have the capacity to get around and take care of all the streetlights. There's 2,223 streetlights as of two years ago. And there's a percentage of them, as you drive home back on the road here, you'll notice there are five or six of them that are burned out. It takes people and capacity and time to, to take care of those things. Now we're adding a whole bunch of electrical systems that are very fancy, very complicated, and we've never seen them before. And we're buying mon, we're, we're paying money for the next 25 years in this project. 25 years and the money's all loaded up front. We're spending $18 million on a capital improvement project. Keep that in mind when you're thinking about what else we might want to do for the next 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joey Ann Anderson, precinct six. I moved to this town 20 years ago before I ever had any children. The main reason I moved to this town was for the school system. And my kids have gone through the Westland School, they've gone through McCarthy. I have two kids in the Chelmsford High School. Right now, my children have to, not at this particular date, but through the winter, my kids had to wear their coat in the Chelmsford High School from class to class because the heat in the house, in one room will be 90 degrees. They'll take their coats off and have a T-shirt on. They'll go to another room, they have to put their coats back on because it's freezing. It's, my understanding is that this is going to fix that. And if they don't do this, they're going to come back with the capital plan to fix it. So inevitably, we're going to have to fix what's wrong with the school system. And let's be real, we all own single, most of us, own single-family houses. We all need to sell these single-family houses someday and we're all going to hope that we sell these single-family houses to someone else who's going to bring their children into this town because they love Chelmsford and they love the Chelmsford school system. And a lot of people are very gung ho or very pro-green and I think it's a good thing that we're actually being a little proactive here and thinking green as well. So I really had a debate on this one because 18 million is a lot of money, but the fact of the matter is I think a lot of these things are going to come back in the next one to four years. We're going to see all the things that are on this list come back in the capital budget and we're going to have to buy them anyway. So let's just do this and try to get something from it and do it the right way. I think this is the right way.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Tom Gilroy, precinct nine, 14 Timmy Road. I would like to ask you, what was the vote please for the finance committee and also the vote for the selectmen please on this article?
The finance committee voted four in favor and three against.
Thank you.
Selectmen?
The board of selectmen voted four in favor, one against.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to address a few points quickly. One, the energy savings are based on a percentage. So even if energy prices drop through the floor, Johnson Controls guarantees to pay us out at that baseline energy level, increasing at 3.5 percent a year. On the other hand, if energy prices go up through the roof and something happens and we don't meet our percentage savings, they pay us out at the higher rate. So at no point will we get paid out at anything lower than the 3 percent annual increase in rate, even if they, if it, energy prices drop. Secondly, when's the last time we were able to take out an $18 million bond and not pay back, pay it back through an increase in the taxes? I can't remember that ever happening, happening. And I, I don't want anyone to miss that point, that this is not being paid off through some increase in taxes. This money that you see is going to be spent if we do not vote on this tonight. We will continue to spend this money anyways so we can spend it on improvements or we can just send it to National Grid. That's really the two options that we have. So, and the people who put this together on our committee, the Energy Conservation Committee, are experts in the field. Johnson Controls are contractually obligated to pay us out if this doesn't work. They're experts. They certainly don't want to be writing us a check. They're so good at this that only one-half of 1 percent of the time do they write back a check because they don't want to pay it out. But if they have to, if the energy, the solar panels don't work and they don't get the money or something else fails, they have to write us a check. It's a, it's a win-win for the town. It really is a win-win for the town. Thank you.
Karen DiNata, precinct eight. Just a couple of things to think about. Not only would they write us a check, but I believe the work would all be done by September of 2014. So I'm not too concerned about them going anywhere because we're going to have the benefit of the work being done before anybody's concerned of them not being here. The other thing is, you got to look at the opportunity cost. We can't afford to not do some of this stuff. Face it, we live in an old town. Our buildings are old. We've had to go to the town many, many times for a debt exclusion. How many times have we had to fight to get some of this stuff done? And then we even have to take concessions like at the fire station because we can't get exactly what we need to do. So for us to be able to do this and do it within our, our existing budget, I think that we should really take a serious look at it. The other thing is, I just wanted to hear some of the concerns though from the finance committee as to why four people were four and three were against. I don't know if there's some concerns that we might need to think about as we're voting on this. Sure. Well, the finance committee, some of the people that voted against the article were concerned that some of the savings wouldn't be realized over the 20-year period. So that was basically what we felt. We felt that, that some of the savings could be accomplished by doing it in a more piecemeal fashion. We didn't feel everything on the list could, should be done at this point in time.
Paul, you mentioned something about a new boiler...
Excuse me. If you want to ask Paul a question.
Mr. Manager, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Do you want to ask Paul a question?
For the moderator, I'd like to ask Mr. Cohen a question, please. We, it was stated earlier that we've already replaced a boiler in one of the schools as far back as, what, 2007, I think it was. Mr. Ferrietti, you had said it. Are we going to, if, I'm assuming because of the way the project is, we're going to be replacing that boiler also?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
We're not?
No.
But they will guarantee that boiler and they'll take care of it? It'll be, become part of the project?
No, no. Not, not everything, not every building, not every boiler, not every electrical or, or utility component is being replaced. It's selected equipment that is being replaced. So the boiler we did five years ago is not going to be replaced. But the air handling units at the high school that haven't been replaced, that go back to '74, are going to be replaced.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Glenn Thorne, precinct five. Because this requires a two-thirds vote, I would urge everybody to seriously think about voting in favor of this because of many of the attributes that you've heard presented to you tonight. It's a very innovative concept to allow us to pay for improvements that we need with funds that are generated by the energy savings from the solar panels. Now, solar panels aren't that efficient, especially in the northern hemisphere where we're located, but they do generate energy. And between these solar, solar panels and other solar energy that we're buying, the entire town being able to pay for its energy needs through solar electricity is, is a good thing. But more importantly than that, this is an innovative way to pay for improvements while saving at the same time. Brian's, uh, streetlights will be shut off on time. The energy distribution in the schools will be moderated so that some of the classrooms aren't 110 degrees while other ones are 60 degrees. If you have students in the schools, you know that is the case in some cases. So getting the entire energy management system for the town under control by Johnson Controls is a good thing. Because if you don't do it now, it'll stay the way it is or it'll have to be done in the future. So here we have an opportunity to pay for it through savings and still get all the necessary things done to make our town more overall energy efficient. This kind of a complex opportunity structured this way doesn't come along very often. One point I want to make, people have said that, well, you know, there's a, there's a subsidy behind this. Well, sure there is, because you're paying taxes which go to the government and the government decides that they will subsidize some things that improve the communities. Well, I would like some of that money to come back to Chelmsford because I don't want it going to Andover or to Arlington or to some other town that decides they're going to do this and our money goes to them. If a subsidy comes back, that's not necessarily a bad thing. I want my money back. And if we're doing it in a smart way so that we get the cost savings as well as the solar panel energy installations and we are getting some of our own tax money back to pay for it, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, can I speak as a resident, not as town meeting representative?
Name and address.
Robert Andrews, Tadmuck Road. I live in precinct five, for those who care. As training, I am an HVAC engineer. I have PE registrations in four states. I have been a practicing engineer since 1986. In trade, I am a sustainability and energy use consultant. I consult to projects ranging from 5,000 square feet of public and private buildings to more than a million square feet of public and private buildings. Therefore, this is my life, this is what I do. As a member of the energy committee, I'd like to respond to some of the statements that representatives have legitimately put forth and see if I can help allay some of their concerns. Mr. Moran talked about the escalation of natural gas costs.
I would ask you, just a small technicality.
Sir?
Refer to him as one of the previous speakers.
Okay.
Not by name.
Okay. So then, one of the previous speakers expressed a concern about fuel costs, specifically natural gas costs. The contract as it is written does not concern itself with electricity or fuel gas cost. It concerns itself with electricity or fuel gas usage. It is purely a unit usage contract. Therefore, if the price of gas goes through the roof or it plummets to 12 cents per megatherm, it's still going to be based on savings in usage. it's still going to be based on savings in usage. One of the other previous, uh, speakers was concerned about the efficiency of the solar panels on the roof. The efficiency and the latitude and the angle of mounting has been built into the payback calculations. It's all been taken into account already. Johnson Controls is not in the business of writing checks back to their clients and they strive to avoid that at all possible costs. The Finance Committee correctly expressed concern that maybe greater, uh, efficiency for the town could be gained by splitting the projects and doing them ourselves. With all due respect, if we were to do these sorts of projects, we would need to hire engineers or architects or both, pay them, and then go out to bid in the public bid process and obtain the services of general contractors and subcontractors, at which point the projects would be subject to errors in omission, oversight. Any change order is then the responsibility of the town. Whereas in this particular case, the cost of the installation is guaranteed by Johnson. They say they're going to put it in. If they find pieces that they have not included, they still have to put it in and they can't change their cost. Finally, if we were to do the projects ourselves, any energy savings that we thought we would get but didn't get, we would eat. Johnson writes us a check in this case. I think I covered as many as I could hear, so I'll stop.
Beth Logan, Precinct Three. About those energy costs, there is not a single person in this room who can tell us what energy costs are gonna be in five years. Second, for China, just so you know, I actually work for a company in Chelmsford that makes the equipment that we sell to China that makes the solar panels. So, it's a global world. And with that, I'd like to move the question, uh, the motion.
Can't do it.
Brian Latina, Precinct Four. I'd like to respond to, um, a question about, a question about the, the, um, equipment that we currently have and we're not able to maintain. I'd, I'd argue the fact that what we're doing here is we're adding to our capital budget. We spent three-point-one million dollars this year on our capital budget. Every year, town meeting, every year, town meeting, I'm sorry?
What's going on? Say that again? Point, yeah, that's your point of order. Could you come to the microphone and tell us what your point of order is?
The point of order is when a speaker comes to the microphones that are facing front. We do not need to be lectured to. So if the speaker would address the boards and the proponents.
This is the debate section. He can actually say anything he wants in debate and you're-
Yes, I agree.
Wait a minute. I can't take a word right now. But as, as long as it's not offensive and you can get in line and you can debate him.
I don't need to.
Okay.
Again, Brian Latina, Precinct Four. I'm, I'm talking to all of town meeting who represents the taxpayers in our town and the community. What we're doing here is we are committing another million dollars a year to our capital budget, but we're front-loading it. We're spending, we're borrowing, we're borrowing again. We're borrowing eighteen million dollars upfront so that we can hand it to our facilities department and a, and a contractor to, to try to spend that money upfront for the savings that you see maybe over the course of twenty years. I'm gonna bet you that, that the technology for solar devices, batteries, electrical systems, even rooftop ventilating systems will change in the next five years. We're borrowing money for twenty years based on current things that are happening in our world. Right now, if you pick up your electric bill, twenty percent of your electric bill here in Chelmsford through National Grid is not, is not coal-generated, it's nuclear-generated. That box in Seabrook is gonna run whether we buy it or not. And I know we can do some savings with solar if that schedule works out. If it doesn't, we could arguably save some money five years from now. Uh, my suggestion is to consider giving, giving the facilities department, Mr. Persicetti, a million dollars more, four-point-one million dollars instead of the three-point-one million dollars. And I bet he could buy, he could buy enough equipment to replace the school ventilating systems that we were told were fine, by the way, when we did the thirty-million-dollar benefit. They, they were mechanically fine. We could save some energy with them, I'm sure, by, by using some other technique. But town meeting ought to control what we do year by year by year. That's what you're elected for. If we throw it into somebody else's lap, we're very likely to get an eighteen-million-dollar bump here and we're gonna be paying for it for twenty years. That's the issue. It's a million dollars a year, but it's front-loaded and the cash flow is negative, folks. The cash flow is what we pay on our tax rate, which is the highest in the region right now. And we still have not put enough money in our budget to pay for our retirees' pension fund. About, between four and seven and a half million dollars should have been voted last Monday. We didn't have enough money to do it. We haven't put any money in that. And in the next twenty years, that money will come due and we're, we're gonna still be paying this. And a solar panel in five years, my opinion, will be junk. I've seen them in New Jersey. Rocks thrown through them, blown down by hurricane. And the other interesting thing is, the angle is such that the birds sit above them and they cover them in white. So somebody's gonna have to clean these things up. Somebody's gonna have to maintain and replace them. And I didn't see any replacement maintenance money in there for Mr. Persicetti to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich Day, Precinct Three. Want to move the question?
Motion to move the question. There are two speakers remaining. Uh, I'll go for a- There are no speakers remaining. Need two-thirds on this. I'll, I'll, I'll go by the tickets first. Lots of all those in favor. All those against? Question is moved.
Thank you.
Okay, we are voting on Article Nineteen, which would appropriate eighteen million, one-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-six to enter into an energy management performance contract with Johnson Controls. This requires a two-thirds vote. A yes vote is you're in favor, a no vote is you're against. Go.
Well, as you see, the, uh, votes tally up there. Brings to a close a fairly lengthy debate, important debate on the energy future of the town in a lot of respects. This is an opportunity that has been years in development. As the representatives from the Energy Conservation Committee pointed out, this has taken them three years and, and three tries of, uh, creating the RFP. Looks to me like, uh, it's gonna easily pass. It needs two-thirds.
The yes votes are a hundred and seventeen. The no votes are twenty-eight. No abstentions. It's clearly a two-thirds majority. The article passes.
Could I have a, attention? I don't know if this is in order, but I would like to make a motion to limit the question-and-answer period to fifteen minutes for the rest of the articles of the night.
All those in favor of limiting the question-and-answer period to fifteen minutes, raise your tickets. All those against, raise your tickets. Motion's defeated. Article Twenty. I have a standing motion to waive the reading of Article Twenty. All those in favor, raise your tickets. All those against? Reading is waived. Mr. Manager.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Twenty pertains to the golf course clubhouse facility. And, um, I'd like to call upon Gail Kruglak and, and, and Gary Persicetti, who've been part of this effort to present this article. Gary's been involved with the, what- And Kevin Osgood is here. Kevin Osgood, Mr. Moderator, is the manager of the Chelmsford Country Club. He is a resident of the town of Westford, so therefore we need permission for Mr. Osgood to speak, uh, at the meeting this evening.
I need permission for Kevin Oz- Osgood. Where's he from?
Westford.
From Westford to speak. All those against? Permission's granted.
Hi, I'm Gail Kruglak, Precinct Seven. I'm gonna do a very brief presentation on Chelmsford Country Club. Oh, I was trying not to pop those peas. What I wanted to go through was the background, how we ended up, where we are today, what we're looking at right now with the existing facility, what we feel the impact would be if we decide not to move forward with the repair of the building, the current, the benefits the country club offers to the town of Chelmsford, a few cost estimates, and our final recommendation. For a little bit of background, nineteen ninety-six, the town spent nearly a million dollars to purchase the country club from Apple. And they saved it at that time from plan development. If anybody was a golfer at that time, it was basically sand and gravel. It really was very, very poor condition. It was not a place you'd come back to after you visit once. Sterling Golf Management took it over, has transformed the golf course. It's now a very playable course. It's very successful. There's over six, six to eight active leagues, um, currently using the course. Two high school golf teams in Chauvin-Chelmsford High School use the course. There's numerous tournaments throughout the year. Both local, private tournaments, out of, out-of-the-area tournaments that are brought in there and fundraisers are done there. It's a lot of golf lessons, summer youth programs. It's, it's pretty widely used. It's a pretty busy place. In October of this year, when they went in to do some repairs on the building, it was determined that it was a lot more damaged than they originally thought and that it was improperly built. It was unsafe. And in December of this year, the town selectman voted that it needed to be taken down to preserve, excuse me, what could be saved in the building. That same December Board of Selectmen meeting, Linda Lowell and myself, who were appointed ad hoc to the Permanent Building Committee, so we could work on some resolutions of what could be done. And from January to April of this year, we met, we worked through several different plans and we tried to work on plans that would be cost-effective and they would meet the needs of the community and keep the, the country club running successfully. This is what we currently have now. This area here is where we keep, it keeps being referred to in the paper and, and in a lot of other areas that the function room was taken down and people tend to focus on that. The function room was the top floor. The bottom floor was also the pro shop. It was a meeting room. It was offices, men's room and ladies' room. So it wasn't just the function room. All of it came down and it's now this cement pad. The impact, if we don't go forward with this in just a few of the items, is basically the loss of funding. Currently, this, the course runs, operates, is maintained. The grounds are kept at no cost to the town. Sterling Golf Management contributes thirty-five thousand dollars a year to the Enterprise Fund. It comes from the operations of the course. The grounds are maintained. The employees are paid. Uh, the course is run and there's no, no cost to the town. Oops, back. Without the room, I mean, if you look, if you focus on it as just a function room for the outside functions, we've determined that it will lose about fifteen thou- that the management company will lose about fifteen thousand dollars just this year in not being able to do outside rentals. But in addition to that, the membership, the league play, unable to fun- they're unable to function. There's not, you're unable to have tournaments there. The, the leagues can't fit in the small area that we have left. Right now is the bar, the, the two bathrooms and the kitchen are what's left. Without those leagues, without the members, there's no, there's no operating the club. It can't be funded on the, the ten, twelve, whatever, that it, people pay to play around the golf. So that will go away. A lot of the leagues are supporting it this year in the hopes, you know, they're gonna make do with what we have. They're, they're supporting it in hopes that this will be rebuilt for next year. If there was a no vote going down the line, the, the town would have to take over the management of the club, which they're not in any position to do. The grounds would have to be maintained by the town, the, the membership, the, uh, the day-to-day operations. They're not in a position to do that. There wouldn't be the money to do it. And ultimately, I think, I think the bigger, my biggest fear is, the reason that we bought it to begin with was to keep it from being developed. And I think the burden of running this over the, the course of the next several years without it being maintained, I think we'd be back here looking at, what do we do with this? It's time to sell it. And it could possibly, you know, we could, it could fall into disrepair. And I worry about the potential for, for someone looking at it for development and it's a beautiful piece of land. It would be a great loss to the town. The benefits are, go without saying. There's, we have, Chelmsford has great recreation opportunities for residents, baseball fields, soccer fields, hiking trails, lakes, beaches, and a golf course. And it's a very important part of the town and I feel that it needs to be maintained. And just to repeat, the operations, it, it's run at no cost to the town and that's funded by the, by the Enterprise Fund. So briefly, what we did was we came up with a couple of options. I had them up here, but you're probably not gonna be able to see them. No. The first thing we decided, when we looked at it, was pro- was we had the idea to take the whole thing down and start from scratch and rebuild basically what we had. Prices came in at over five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, so we thought we better go back to the drawing board. And we came up with option two, which would have added, we felt that making it a one level rather than a two level at what we had, we could add a thirty-six-by-thirty-six function room at the back, a pro shop at the front. Everything would be run on one floor. We could eliminate additional bathrooms. Excuse me. Those prices came in over four-hundred thousand. So again, we went back to the start and we came up with what we're recommending today, which is option three. It's a thirty-six-by-forty-two addition off the back. What's highlighted in yellow is what exists right now and would remain. The thirty-six-by-forty-two addition off the back would be the function room. The pro shop would be incorporated into that area. The deck would be replaced along the side facing the first T. And that would save money from having to pour a second foundation out front for the pro shop. It eliminates the two bathrooms that were removed downstairs. The coatroom up front has been turned into an office and it's, it's working. This would incorporate everything that really needs, the club needs to, to function at a cost of three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. It could be done with no impact to the Chelmsford taxpayers. It'd be done with current operation, uh, current budget, which and it, it is the most cost-effective plan that we could come up with. And it meets, it meets all the needs. So if you have any questions?
Question-and-answer period.
Dave McLaughlin, Precinct Six. The Enterprise Fund provides for revenue and expenses and over the last few years is operated at roughly breakeven?
The Enterprise, the Enterprise Fund was just created. Prior to approximately, uh, I'll say two thousand and twelve, the revenue from the golf course was used, uh, part of the revenue was used from the golf course to pay back the original bond from nineteen ninety-six.
Can you step back a little bit from the mic? So why should the town provide capital costs for the, for the golf course? Why shouldn't the Enterprise Fund generate enough revenue to pay for operating expenses and capital costs?
I, I don't know.
As, as Kevin described, up until a year ago, there was no Enterprise Fund for the golf course. The revenue that came in from the golf course was a local receipt, going to the general fund. And then we met the, um, expenses for the golf course through capital art- fund, and then we met the expenses for the golf course through capital articles, such as when we had to buy the netting for the, for the first tee. You see there on the right-hand side, something you may recall, that was a capital item. The issue right now is, is we don't, we don't have any funds in the Enterprise Fund, and that was why we went to an Enterprise Fund, so much like the Chelmsford Forum and so forth, that it would continue to pay for itself. What happened here with the clubhouse facility was unforeseen. We became an issue of a leak and a structural problem in the corner of the building, and then once the facilities department opened it up, we then realized we had to bring in a structural engineer, and then a structural engineer provided a written report that said that that facility would not last the winter, and that was when we went to the selectman and raised the building last December. What we're saying going forward is, in order for the golf course to be viable, you know, let's look at what it is, folks. It's a nine-hole public course that, you know, it's not going to attract serious professional golfers or serious, you know, people who are going to, to the private clubs in the area. What this is, is this is a nine-hole course for beginners, for seniors, and so, and we use it for our, for our high school leagues and so forth. And we, and we, and part of the revenue, as you said, it's only $35,000 per year goes in and out between the function hall and the golf course revenue itself. The problem is, if we don't have this facility, basically you're going to lose your league play, because they're going to go to the other courses and neighboring towns, and, you know, where there's one in Beaufort, and there's one over in Westford, and I'm not going to name their names for marketing purposes, but the bottom line is, you're just not going to have that situation, and therefore what they're trying to explain to is, the course isn't going to be viable. So what we've, what we've done here, and John Suzy can explain if the question comes up, how we're funding it, is we're not proposing to borrow any money, because we are concerned about the debt level. We have some available funds within our operating budget that we're transferring into this thing to pay this off, and then in the future, we don't anticipate any additional requests. And then you say, well, where's the money then going to go from the Enterprise Fund once this is all fully functioning? Well, the golf course isn't just the clubhouse and the function room and so forth, just look at the course itself. Any kind of a course, you've got irrigation systems, you've got the pump house out in the, in the field, you've got to rebuild tee boxes, greens, and holes and so forth, just to keep a course functional. That's where the revenue front's going to come. We just can't absorb that ongoing cost, as well as this extraordinary unforeseen cost to deal with the basic clubhouse and function room facility.
Curtis Barton, Precinct 9, two questions. First one, what's the expected life of the addition? Useful service life? 10 years, 20, 20, 30?
40 years.
Should be about 40 years.
Good. Some of your materials have said that there's a, that we're going to, this is not going to cost us any money. Is there a repayment period here? Is this the intent?
No, they're going to pay it with current budget money. Thank you.
Mary Jane Como from Precinct 4. My question is, how does this new addition by square footage compare with what was demolished?
Demolished was basically 36 by 36, and this will be 36 by 42. The addition to the back is to be able to fit in the pro shop, because we will not be using downstairs like it did before as it, they'd like to function on one level.
So does that mean then the function room will accommodate at least the same amount as was able to be accommodated before?
Exactly the same, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Maria Cara Phillips, Precinct 2. I was just wondering, how many local businessmen, local contractors were allowed to bid or were, had bid on the job?
The job has not been bid at all. It can't, nothing could be bid, nothing could be done until...
Until this?
This, yes.
Do you know...
We ascertained a couple of contractors to help us get to an estimate, but there's no bid on the street at all.
Okay. And what is the rules about the bidding processes? They have to, you have to go off the state bid list, or do you have to, can you...
No, you have to be decam certified because of the price tag of it. Number one, you have to pay prevailing wage, which would be the second one, so it's going to require a general contractor with subcontractors.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Logan, Precinct 3. This is a question for Mr. Cohen. The turf fields involved fundraising, the dog park, which we'll hear about later, involved fundraising, but this does not appear to, and I'm wondering how the town decides what projects require outside kind of private fundraising and what projects don't.
Basically, those projects that we think fundraising is a viable alternative, we'll pursue. We just don't see that as a viable alternative for this situation.
Len Thorren, Precinct 5. I just want to make sure I understand the layout of this facility. Again, the picture that you showed, which was a top view, that view there, the large function room is at the same level as the bar area is, was?
Yes.
Off that's a deck, directly off that function room?
Yes.
Little corner cutout for an office or something there?
That's the pro shop.
Pro shop?
That will be where the pro shop is now.
What's underneath this? Because it is two stories high in the back, I mean, this...
The info underneath was to, to, will be open, and it'll be to store the electric carts.
Oh, thank you.
Karen DeNato, Precinct 8. If, everything that's already been leveled, is the pro shop still in existence?
It is not.
So it's gone?
It's not there. Right now, they have a little area set up behind the bar.
So is there an area for the pro shop to continue functioning?
The pro shop, this year, will, they're making do in the bar. The pro shop, if this were to go forward, would be right here in the front corner of the function room. There'd be entrance from the deck, there'd be entrance from the bar, so you could walk through the front doors, you could walk through here, or you could come up the stairs and enter.
And how much revenue did the function room typically bring in, average, over the five-year span or whatever?
The revenue projected loss or reduction in the lease payment to the town right now is approximately $15,000. That's the net difference of what we've done in a long-term projection that's available to pay the town toward the, close to, very close to $35,000 to $40,000 that's paid annually to the town.
I don't know if that was, so how much revenue does the facility usually bring in the function room?
Just as outside rentals, or...
Revenue.
The facility, the revenue to the town?
No. How much revenue does the function hall actually generate?
Gross revenue before expenses? Rental income, liquor income, food income, I'm a little bit...
Income. I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out, if we're looking to rebuild the function hall, is it worth rebuilding the function hall, or is it just worth having the pro shop for a couple of years, continue running the golf course, and let that eventually fund, or we get fundraising or whatever to do the facility? I'm trying to figure out, how much revenue does the function hall generate for us to invest $350,000 to rebuild?
You're asking to break down the cost of the function hall. What I had tried to explain earlier, the function hall as a rental, as an outside rental for outside facilities, they've estimated that the loss of just the function room will be about a loss of $15,000 a year in income. But the function hall is not just used for outside rentals. It's also used for tournaments, it's used for league play, because there's not enough room to seat people. The point of the matter was, if the leagues go away, there is no income on the golf course.
Okay, so it's used by the leagues?
It's used by the leagues, it's used for tournaments, it's used, it's used on a daily basis.
Okay, thanks.
Bill Griffin, Precinct 9. Just a couple of questions on the layout, please. Pretty familiar with the, with the clubhouse and its previous configuration, the carts underneath. The small rectangle on the, in the lower left of the, of the white area is supposed to be the pro shop, correct?
This is where the projected pro shop will be.
Right. And with the, with the cart, with the cart path, the way that it is now, from the parking area down to the first tee, you'd have to put up steps to get to what I assume is the deck area there, right? Now, if you're planning on putting in that at the same level as the rest of the facility, if memory serves, that's a pretty significant change in elevation, is it not? That's on the order of eight to 10 feet?
It's, it's, it would be the same height that it was before it was taken down, and there was two sets of stairs off the old addition as it was, yes.
Right. So has, are you able to speak to what that change in elevation is? If we're, if we're catering towards our youngsters and our seniors in town, you know, how accessible is that going to be for folks to get up and down?
That's why, that's why the front of the building keeps the ADA ramp in and out, and under this plan is some talk about rearranging some of the locations of the carts during the day for that as well, to make it easier.
Mr. Moderator?
Evelyn Thorren, Precinct 5. Are you touching the kitchen at all in this project?
No.
Is there any plan to address the kitchen? Because it's a mess. If you wanted to improve the function hall, because I've rented the function hall, the kitchen is like useless. So is this only going to be used for, with outside catering? Are you restricting the use of the kitchen? You know, how will people be able to rent this?
We typically, we don't rent out the kitchen, because we are licensed for the food service at the club and do not allow cooking from outside. We allow food to be brought in from the outside, but not to be cooked on premises. The kitchen itself right now is a workable kitchen, it's not really a wreck. I mean, the exhaust hood's, motor's been replaced, the hoodwork's just fine, you know, the stove is relatively new, fryolator's relatively new, within a reasonable amount of time. So for the service of golfers, which is typically burgers, hot dogs, you know, minimal food, and then just catered service, the kitchen's operable as it is right now.
Okay, so then it's approved since the last time I saw it?
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Griffin, Precinct 9. To continue the line of question, folks, the bathroom issue, the existing area is very, very small. You've got, you've got effectively the bar in the same open areas where the bathrooms are, and it looks like you're planning on keeping them there. You've got bars and, you've got bars and functions going on, afternoon leagues, adults drinking, that kind of stuff, and you're going to have minors at the end of the leagues trying to get in their rounds before the end of the day. How do you plan on dealing with that and keeping the kids safe?
The pro shop is separate with a separate entrance, that's the main reason why we are trying to add the addition on. Right now, in the temporary situation that we're having to operate, we're having to operate the pro shop and 100% of our service to all customers out of the bar area.
I understand that part of it, and I understand the pro shop part of it. My question is, the facilities, you're going to have one set of bathrooms, correct?
That is correct.
So regardless of whether or not you play, pay for your round afterwards, the youngsters are going to have to access the same facilities as the adults who are drinking and using that facility. What's our plan?
There's, there's, I agree with you, I hear what you're saying, but there's very little drinking that's going on at the club during the daytime when the golf course is open. The only time there's actually, even the seats are fully, are fully utilized, is when the league business is going on, or afternoon, or during a function business in the evening when the kids aren't there.
Thank you.
Steve Flynn, Precinct 3. What is the cost of membership to play the golf course?
It ranges from approximately, approximately $600 up to $1,000, depending on senior full week, Monday through Friday, it varies.
I mean, that's a tremendous asset for the town. I'm not a golfer, but I have friends who play golf, and they go to other country clubs, and the cost is prohibitive. I'm a member of the senior board.
Can you ask a question, please?
And the question is that a lot of seniors use this, okay? It's a wonderful opportunity. If this is not voted, if this is voted down, we lose that golf course, and it's nuts. I mean, if you look at a town moving into the town, you look at the school system, you look at, we have a hockey arena, we have a golf course, that is a tremendous plus, and it's affordable. I got a call from a neighbor today that she played golf there.
Excuse me, I would like a question, because you can save all of that for debate.
Okay. The question is that she said when she finishes her game of golf over there, there's nowhere to go to have a cup of coffee, it's just, you know, it's not right in a way, because most clubs will have this here. I just say that I think it's a tremendous asset, and I hope it's voted on. Thank you.
Please, next time, don't come up and debate, come up and ask a question. See, no more questions. Finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Okay. I've been told by town council that this is not a two-thirds majority vote, this is just a plain, simple majority vote. We're in debate section now.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Griffin, Precinct 9. On the face of it, I very much support the proposal, seen the, the facility in the past be widely used, and it continues to be used today. We, as an entity, used great foresight to preserve the open space a number of years ago, and as the town manager alluded to, this was an unforeseen event. I can, I compliment the folks on trying to make use of the existing footprint and minimize the expense to the town. However, as a participant in some of the leagues that are there during the day, I personally witnessed the behavior of adults that are there, and while it's not an overbearing situation, I would offer to you that the majority of those seats that are in that building in the afternoon are not dry, if you understand my meaning. That being said, I'd like to see this article approved with the understanding that this body has enough concerns about its children and elders to make the accessibility a little bit better, and to put in a set of facilities, that, bathrooms that folks can use where the youngsters maybe aren't quite so exposed to the bar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave McLaughlin, Precinct 6. I am in favor of this article as well. However, I would like to remind the body that I don't believe that the town of Chelmsford should be in the business of being in business, and that when we ask people to run facilities for us, that we should expect them to provide for all of the operating costs and all of the capital costs. If the town wants to subsidize an initiative, then we should subsidize it on an annual
See, no more debate. We will take it to a vote. Article 20 would appropriate $350,000 for the replacement of the clubhouse at the Chelmsford Country Club, and it only requires a majority.
This is Kelly Beadie for Chelmsford Telemedia, just breaking in to let you know that we're still quite a ways from the end of this town meeting, and it is not clear at all to me whether we're going to get through it by the end of the night. I think at 10:30, I think it's very doubtful. So I wouldn't be surprised to see the, the town meeting adjourned after, oh, say, Article 23.
Yes, votes are 135.
We'll see how that goes.
The no votes are six, zero abstentions, article passes. Article 21.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move that we view Article 23 now, seeing as the Board of the Chelmsford Dog Association is present tonight and cannot necessarily make it on Thursday.
You want to take Article 23 out of order?
Please.
Have a motion to take Article 23 out of order. All those in favor, raise your tickets. All those opposed?
All right, sorry, sir. Just have to stay by. I don't think it should be that long.
Article 23. Board of Selectmen Chair Matthew Henson moves that the town transfer the care, custody, and management and control of a portion of a town-owned parcel of land described in a plan on file in the town clerk's office entitled Chelmsford Dog Park, dated February 21st, 2013, located at 54 Richardson Road, identified by the Board of Assessors as Map 26, Block 93, Parcel 1, from the Board of Selectmen or any other board or officer for the purposes for which they are presently held to the Board of Selectmen for the use as a dog park. Who's going to speak to this? Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll start the discussion on this, and I'll be joined, I believe, by the dog park people who have to get home soon, so if they could come up here to the front, we can get going. Basically, what's going on here is, as we're, many are aware, in less than two months, we'll be relocating the... months, we'll be, uh, relocating the highway department operations with the ex- exception of the vehicle maintenance, uh, portion off of the Richardson Road site, um, to, to the Alpha Road site. So the question then becomes to the community, what do we do with the Richardson Road facility, um, in the near or, or intermediate future? And my concern as manager of the community is, is one, is to make it an attractive location, uh, and also not to preclude any future municipal use of this, of the property by the town. So at this point, um, looking out, there's been a longstanding effort by the Chelmsford Dog Association to identify a dog park in the community. So they've worked with, with, uh, with, with their efforts, and, and we've provided them with some engineering assistance in terms of provide a schematic layout of how the site may be used, uh, and, and, and there, we'll talk about their fundraising efforts to actually construct the site. This parcel was acquired by the town back in mid nineteen-fifties. In fact, it was, there was no designated use at the time. The town voted to acquire it, and since that time, we've used it as a highway yard. As I said, going to the future, the town has no effort or, or plans to, to vest itself of the site, and so when we look at something like this as a dog park, or, or perhaps even a small recycling facility that will replace the, uh, current cardboard and stuff collection behind the town offices, because that will get displaced by the fire station, we intend to do these low impact type of uses, again, that don't preclude the future use long-term in case the town ever had a need for a building site or, or so forth. So with that, is sort of where our schematic is. I'm now gonna, uh, open it up to Vivian, if she, uh, who's the, uh, leader of the Dog Park Association for some opening statements, and then we'll take any questions.
Hi, my name is Vivian Merrill. I'm the president of the Chelmsford Dog Association. Um, basically, this group came together about four years ago to help the Animal Control Officer address, uh, concerns in town with dogs running at large, and, you know, dogs getting hit by cars, and, and, you know, dogs running on fields and things of that, and making things unpleasant for other people that were using the various fields and open spaces. Um, basically, we've been looking for a site for four years. We've, you know, gone through the, the open, the, uh, two thousand and ten master plan. We've gone through the open space and recreation plan. We've looked at about two dozen sites before we came to this one. There's about thirty-six hundred registered dogs in town, and, uh, we'd like to see them have a facility that they can use, and they'd be welcome at off-leash. We plan on financing this mostly ourselves, through donations and grants and whatever way we can find, and, uh, we respectfully ask for your support. And I will, you know, await any questions that you may have, and we'll go from there.
Question and answer period. Do you have a question? It's a question and answer period. See, no one queued up, up. Gotta be a little quicker than that, it's getting late.
George Merrill, Precinct Two, I have a question. Do you accept the liability that's involved with this? It could pollute the North Chelmsford water, which is located six hundred feet from this facility. Do you accept the liability?
Mr. Moderator, the, the, it's not the responsibility for the Dog Association to respect the liability. As I noted earlier, the ownership and control of the property will remain of the town of Chelmsford. Clearly, the town of Chelmsford values the resources of all of our water districts, including the North Chelmsford Water District. We will ensure that there are no issues of runoff or other issues with the site, however it's used, that would present any risk to the water supply. All of our efforts obviously are monitored by the Department of Environmental Protection and so forth, and therefore, we, we don't perceive any risk with a dog park. There will be rules for the dog park in terms of cleaning up for the animals and so forth, to make it not only, you know, not only a health risk, but also not a nuisance in terms of the, the impact on the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. M- Manager. I don't see any, uh, one else queued up. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
We're in a debate section now?
George Merrill, Precinct Two, if the town votes this, they are accepting the liability that's gonna be placed on the North Water District, is that, thank you.
Beth Logan, Precinct Three, the, as Viv said, and I want to reiterate, over forty-five thousand dollars is brought into this town by dog owners just solely in dog licenses. And they have been working very hard with various people to make, including the North Water District. And on top of that, we've, we know that the North Water District had had issues with DPW, and so far, I don't think there's been any lawsuits that has caused major problems for the town, although I know there's been some issues. But if you look at this right now, there's wildlife, and there's neighboring dogs, and I haven't heard North Water District complain about the wildlife and the neighboring dogs on either side of their property, and they have been working with the dog park, and if there's somebody here, I'd like to have them come up and say something about what the issues are.
Next.
I have a question. I don't understand the article. We're transferring the property from the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Selectmen. How do we undo this if we decide we don't like this use?
Who would you like to answer that?
Whoever's competent to give me an accurate answer.
The Town Manager.
That's all I ask.
Basically, this is an, this is an issue of transparency and seeking the town's input and approval. As you can see, we've kept the control under the Board of Selectmen. While the town's voting is, is designating this use for a particular purpose. So if, as I said, in some future date, if there's another municipal purpose, then it would come to town meeting for a vote, whether it's funding or, or other designation. So this doesn't preclude anything. As you said, we're not gonna enter any type of contractual relationship. So in essence, it will, we stay under the, under the general government control, and then basically, uh, since it's held by the Selectmen, I'll be responsible for the overall management of the operations.
You will be.
Yes. In terms of, be, like I am for any other municipal property under the terms of the charter, yes.
So if it's a simple issue of transparency, is there a reason the Board of Selectmen can't just do this without town meetings vote? Why is it a two-thirds vote?
Well, the, the reason, again, again, we, when I go back and look at the deed, this land was acquired back in, in ninety-five, I'm sorry, nineteen fifty-five. There's no deed restriction, nor is there any designation that, in the town meeting vote of fifty-five for a particular use. So this is really a safeguard measure to, to basically have a formal vote of the town meeting, to basically just vote it for this particular purpose. So again, th- it, there's no covenant or restricted use on it. We're just doing it as, as a town meeting vote.
All right. Thank you.
We're in debate.
Dave Dubinsky, uh, Precinct Two, not one. So, uh, my fellow members, uh, we're not reinventing the wheel. The following towns, and I'll do this quickly, already have existing dog parks in Massachusetts alone. Amesbury, Ashland, Bedford, Bolton, uh, Boston Three, Brookline, Cambridge, Charlton, Dorchester, Framingham, Franklin, Gardner, Bot- Foxborough, Great, Great Barrington, Groton, Halifax, uh, Hingham, Harvard, Hingham has four, Hoptington, Ipswich, Kingston, Duxborough, Lexington, Lynn, Marlborough, Mashpee, Oxford, Revere, Salem, Saugus, Sharon, Shrewsbury, Somerville, Stoneham, Medway, North Reading, Norwell, Oakbluffs, Stone, Tewksbury, Westford, Westboro, Weston, and Worcester. So this is a tried and true type of, uh, issue that's being presented here. Thank you.
Will Wagner, Precinct Eight, uh, question for Town Council. Uh, does this require a two-thirds vote as indicated in our document, or is this a majority?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, it's a two-thirds vote. I believe I announced that.
Mary Jane Como, Precinct Four, um, our family owns property that abuts a pond up in New Hampshire, and just to alleviate, alleviate the fears about water being contaminated, I am quite sure that these people would be responsible to have certain rules where people would pick up after their dogs, they would bag it, and it would be disposed of in some sort of a trash container. It would not be, sometimes people think, well, we won't leave it where people can walk on it, we'll put it over here. Well, that's not good enough if it's near a water supply, because it could, it will eventually work its way in. But I'm quite sure that these people are responsible enough that they would understand that, and they would have some sort of provisions for that, and therefore, I think a dog park is a great idea.
Thank you. See, no one else queued up. We'll go to the vote. It's two-thirds majority. Article twenty-three would transfer the land at fifty-four Richardson Road for use as a dog park. All those in favor, press one. All those against, press two. Three isn't an abstention. The abstentions do not count in the total. Yes, one thirty-four, no, three, two abstentions. Congratulations for my dog. We now have a dog park. Woof, woof, woof. Back to Article twenty-one.
Wave the reading.
I have a standing motion to waive the reading of Article twenty-one. All those in favor? Opposed?
I'm Sue Carter, um, I'm the chairman of the Oak Hill Study Committee. Um, this was a separate handout, oh, ba- up at the back table, and since the font is big enough, if everybody wants to read most of it, I'll try to skip through and not reiterate This is the Oak Hill parcel, I think we've all seen it multiple times. It's outlined in red. Um, Swain Road is over to the far right with the landfill. The committee met for over a year, we had a lot of stakeholders, we had a lot of, um, met with a lot of abutters, advocates for the uses. We viewed our role as to vet every potential use, so that twenty-five years from now, town meeting's gonna say, well, why did they do that? They never considered all the alternatives. That was our key thing on this, and like I said, I'm gonna zip through this. The committee came up with a series of recommendations, and I think these are the more important points of this presentation. We recommended that it be turned, transferred from a general municipal purpose to open space for conservation purposes. What this does is gives us immediate protection for the land. People are afraid that something would be proposed on it. This was recommended by Town Council to give us, um, immediate, um, protection on the property for, um, conservation purposes. Our second recommendation was that it be transferred from the Board of Selectmen to the Conservation Commission automatically at the end of three years. The thought process on this was, uh, access would be through Swain Road, we'd need to build a bridge, paths, it would have to, the access would go around the salt barn and also around the landfill. We felt that where the Selectmen control Swain Road, it was appropriate for them to control the development of the access to the Oak Hill parcel. We also recognized that we're in, a little further in the recommendations, recommending a conservation restriction, also known as a CR. That's easier to negotiate if you don't have as many different entities involved in it, uh, and that's why we felt that a three-year time period was reasonable to get the CR approved. Um, the other thing we realized is that some of the work on that site may require outside contractors, and the Town Manager and Selectmen are much easier to work with getting bids for that, as well as working with the Chelmsford Open Space Stewards. Um, let me, the other recommendations were, um, to create a committee to look at the future land uses and develop the actual plans for gaining access. Um, I think everybody can read it, it's pretty, um, self-explanatory. Um, I'm just going through my notes. We also recommended that a conservation restriction be created. Now, there are several different levels of conservation restrictions. We felt that one that was local and not approved by the state gave this town via town meeting and the Board of Selectmen the most flexibility and cont- local control over this property in the future. If it had gone to the state, it would take the act of, um, the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs to, to change it or modify it. An example would be, twenty years ago, we didn't know anything about mountain biking. Who knows what we'll have twenty years from now if we wanted to change that. If it's local, we can do it. The one thing with a local CR is you can't have one in perpetuity. It expires after thirty years. So we would like to see it automatically renewed, which would be with this town meeting. We went through recommended uses, and as you can see, we do not have, uh, housing or logging, um, or billboards. So every, I think everybody can read this in your handout, so you can see what we've recommended. And the one thing that everyone was concerned is that we do not want the town to do anything that infringed on property rights of the abutters. There are some places where the existing trail network goes onto abutting properties. It may be possible to negotiate either a land swap or a legal easement across that, but we did not want to encourage anything like an eminent domain taking, um, from the abutters. We wanted everything to remain friendly and courteous and recognize the rights of the abutters. So hopefully, that was a quick enough explanation of it. Uh, I think most of the committee is here tonight, so if anybody has questions, we'll be able to answer them. Thank you.
Question and answer. See, none, do I have recommendations?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Any debate? See, none, we'll go directly, directly to the vote, it's a two-thirds majority. Article twenty-one would transfer the Oak Hill land to the Conservation Commission and create access trails to said land. All those in favor, press one. If you're against, press two. If you abstain, it's not gonna count.
Kelly Beadie for Chelmsford Telemedia, if you had, uh, given me a bet that there would be no questions and no debate on this article, uh, I would have not taken it. Pretty amazing that after all of the discussion over the last year or so about the Oak Hill par- parcel, that, uh, it has, uh, become this smooth and seamless.
The yeses are one thirty-two, nos are two, no abstentions, clearly two-thirds majority. Article twenty-two. Standing motion to waive the reading of Article twenty-two. All those in favor? All those opposed? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This'll be real brief. Basically, what we're seeking to do here is transfer four parcels that are held by the town for general purposes and put them into conservation land. And basically, the best way to describe it is look at this map. You can see the, uh, the parcels of the ones that are in yellow are the parcels that we're seeking to transfer. You can see they're located up at the top here, one, two, and then these two smaller ones right here, and there. Uh, the green one are existing Conservation Commission land, and the final portion is Chelmsford Water District land. And again, there's Route four ninety-five on the top, that's Mercury Computer over here, and so forth, and there's Carter Drive, and there's Cove Street, so, and there's New Fletcher coming in this way. So in essence, that, we're just taking this land, putting it to permanent conservation protection, and, and if this happens, the, this acreage, as well as the sixty-six acres you just transferred for Oak Hill, combined, the town's total amount of acreage put into conservation land that the town would hold would, would surpass one thousand acres. We would have one thousand and four point six seven acres, or six point nine point, six point nine six percent of the town-owned, town land would be held at for town purposes for conservation, and the total amount of protected land in the town would increase to over twelve hundred and seventy-three acres, or eight point eight percent of the town. This is quite an accomplishment for, for a community that doesn't have any- have any state-owned land in the community.
Questions? Seeing none. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Debate. Any debate? Seeing none. It's a two-thirds majority. We will take it to a vote. Article 22 seeks approval of the transfer of a specified town-owned land to the Conservation Commission. All those in favor, press one. Opposed, press two. Two-thirds majority. The abstentions will not count.
And we're starting to move through some of the articles pretty quickly here, and the next ones coming up involve zoning for medical marijuana, billboards, and political science. Those could go quickly, but I remind everybody that after the three article petitions...
The vote unanimous, 131 yes, no no's, no abstentions.
Is the one that was one delayed...
Article 24, I have a standing motion to waive the reading of Article 24. All those in favor, raise your tickets. All those opposed? Article 24.
Good evening. My name is Anne McQuiggin. I'm a town meeting rep from Precinct One and also the current chair of the planning board. Back in November...
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move that we adjourn until Thursday.
You can't move. There's an article in motion.
Back on November 6, 2012, a vote was taken in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which passed a medicinal... Medical marijuana law. In the town of Chelmsford, in each precinct, that law was passed. It was a majority vote. So, at issue tonight is...
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Point of order. If my understanding is correct, a motion to adjourn is a privileged motion. It needs to be entertained. May interrupt the speaker. Is that correct?
Cannot interrupt an article in motion.
There is no article in motion. There's just a speaker.
He's the presenter.
That's a speaker, though. It's not... There's not a motion before the...
The article is being discussed. Town Council.
The moderator is correct.
The purpose of me speaking to you tonight is to, number one, make it very clear that the debate tonight is not over whether or not this is legal in the town of Chelmsford. It is. It's legal in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, the issue is, and it was brought to our attention actually by Mr. Belansky, who said the planning board might want to be proactive on this issue and outline a zoning amendment because as of now, a... Well, without this new zoning amendment, medical marijuana dispensaries are allowed anywhere within town, not residential, but, you know, where Stop &amp; Shop is, any strip mall, things of that nature. So, what we did was we drafted a bylaw. But we also drafted what you will see as Article 25, which is a moratorium. And the reason we did that is the Department of Public Health had not come forward and promulgated their rules and regs, so we really didn't know what it was we needed to regulate. The Department of Public Health never even addressed zoning issues in their rules and regs. They currently... If you saw the paper the other day, there are currently proposals to change the medical marijuana law as the state prepares for implementation. And among the bills, one would be to reduce the number of dispensaries within the Commonwealth from 35 to 10, and another would prohibit the dispensing within 1,000 feet of a school, house of worship, or civic center. Well, 1,000 feet, obviously, that's a no-brainer. But I wanted to point out to you, too, that Middlesex County, I think it's 865 square miles, some of the larger cities in Middlesex County, Malden, Everett, Lowell, Medford, Framingham, Cambridge, in my personal opinion, you would more likely find these dispensaries in those areas rather than in a town such as Chelmsford. So, I would ask that tonight, you vote to enact our zoning bylaw and vote to enact our moratorium so that we, in fact, can work on it and tweak it once we know what the Department of Public Health is actually going to do. Because we're operating at a disadvantage because we don't have all the facts, but we are being proactive insofar as we're putting the... Under the zoning bylaw, we are placing the dispensaries, should they come into town, in 1A Limited Industrial, which is primarily industrial park between Turnpike Road, Billerica Road, and Riverneck Road, and IS, which is Special Industrial, primarily Oak Hill, which you see is going into conservation, and some church properties. And you know it's not going to land on a church property. So, I mean, you know, we've pretty well covered it, but we haven't covered it in total because we don't know all the facts, because the state hasn't promulgated the rules. So, it's really a very simple thing. The debate is not whether they can come here. They can legally come here, but we can protect the town, and we can also tighten up the regs once we know what the state's going to do. Thank you very much.
Before we go to question and answer, a point of information. Mr. Griffin, if you look on page 74, it's true that the adjournment is high on the list, but the only questions that can interrupt a speaker are the privileged questions marked by an asterisk, question of privilege, order, or information. Page 74. Now, we have a question and answer. Seeing no question, does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee makes no recommendation on this article.
Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval of this article.
Debate. Yes. Oh, planning board recommendation. I'm sorry. I thought you were speaking for the planning board.
Planning board recommends approval.
Thank you. Okay, now we're in the debate section.
Actually, I have more of a question than anything else. The terminology we have here, has this come from any place specific, or did we just make this up ourselves, or is there... You know, this medical marijuana treatment center being a nonprofit, blah, blah?
Who do you wish to ask that of?
Anybody that can answer it, actually. Probably the planning board.
Could you repeat the question for me, please?
Sure. The terminology you want to place in here, where did this come from? You just come up with ourselves, or...
Yes.
Okay. Does the... Does the planning board expect some sort of a free-for-all or something? I mean, medical marijuana, my understanding is for, like, cancer patients and sick people. I am kind of concerned about maybe the thought process behind making sure it's 1,000 feet from a school. I mean, do we expect cancer patients to cause problems at schools?
Personally, no.
Thank you.
I believe that was the debate section. So, all those... It's a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of Article 24, which would amend the zoning bylaw and usage definitions to add a definition for medical marijuana treatment center, please press one to vote yes, two to vote no. Abstentions do not count. The yeses are 120, nos are 10. Article passes. Mr. Griffin, would it be in order to have a motion to adjourn to a time specific or a motion to extend debate?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn until the following Monday.
No.
Okay. Just wanted to see if you're all awake. Until Thursday, the...
At what time would you like?
At 7:00 PM. Again?
Motion made.
Until Thursday at 7:00.
It's not debatable. Well, it is debatable if you want to change the time. So, all those in favor of adjourning until Thursday, please raise your tickets.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I've been asked to amend the time to 7:30.
Is that a friendly amendment? Motion made to adjourn until Thursday evening at 7:30. All those in favor, raise your tickets. Opposed? See you around. See you on Thursday. Mary, I guess it wasn't your last night after all.
And so, as Moderator Richard DeFraesis points out, we will see you around on Thursday for a fourth edition, a fourth segment of our annual Town Meeting Spring Edition. We did get as far as Article 24. I think I said that we would get through maybe 23. In any case, we're in for another session. I actually was surprised by the length of the discussion on Article 17, the affordable housing, which would set on course... Set us on course for developing 115 units of affordable housing in Chelmsford Woods. Very eloquent presentation by our Housing Authority Director, David Hettison. Still, it took a lot of time to get through all the questions and bring everything down to earth. We will be rejoining you then. We have just a few articles remaining, but they are pithy ones that are going to take some time. One of them in particular is going to be probably the last one taken up, which has been postponed since the first night. That is the framework going forward for collective bargaining agreements. Remember, we approved a budget for $111 million, but that did not include money for any increases accorded to our unions through collective bargaining. So, we'll see how that works out. And I will then join you on Thursday night. I'm Kelly Beadie for the staff and volunteers of Chelmsford Telemedia. Thank you for joining us this evening. Have a good night.
Have a good night.